Okay, if you ever want to please stand. I am Mr. Jordan Villiers in the invitation.
Let us pray. Father, we come this morning thanking you, Lord, for blessing us to be able to come out and conduct the business of this county. Lord, we thank you for all your grace and mercy. We thank you for our nation and our state, and we thank you for this county. And, Lord, we ask you to bless now all of our deliberations there. We'll do it to the best interest of the citizens here and bring glory unto you. So we ask all these blessings, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now I will say, "Praise the delusions to the fire of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, at this time, we will call a meeting order for our May 3, 2017, at 10:00 a.m. of the Board of Commissioners of Gates County. The first order for business is to approve the minutes of our previous meeting on April 5, 2017. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, there have been certainly modifications in. I'll make a motion after approved the minutes as modified.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the minutes as modified. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Before you, you have a agenda. There are, at this time, we will entertain motions, adjustments to the agenda, and I have a couple under Roman number four, delegations, a nice delegation under Kathy Davidson, or Dotna Mason, EIC Executive Director. Dotna Mason, EIC Executive Director, and moving, under new business, just changing the order of things, number 11, the tax suppression rating map. It will move that under Department Report, so Mr. Wynn can report on that when he's talking about emergency management.
I have an addition.
Okay.
For, before you, there is a letter from the Alamo Regional Solid Waste, an E-Waste Letter that they would like for you to consider. So I would like to add that. That's number 16.
Okay, so E-Waste Letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so do I hear?
Madam Chairman, I would also like to add on the new business, type seven, in a discussion on a recommended revision to the current county purchase order policy.
Revision of the county procurement policy?
Of purchase order policy.
Okay, so to be clear of the agenda, we're adding, under delegation, it's Dotna Mason, EIC Executive Director, under 3B, under Roman number five, we are moving tax suppression rating map up to D, under Department Reports, and then, under Roman number eight, new business, we're adding 16, an E-Waste Letter to be considered, and 17, revision of the county purchase policy.
Excuse me, did you say revision or discussion?
A discussion on making a revision.
Okay, discussion.
On making a revision.
Discussion on making a revision. Okay. Any other items? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I believe that we set the agenda as updated before us this morning.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve the agenda as adjusted, and it's second.
I'll second that motion too, Madam Chairman.
Second, and discussion?
No discussion, but would it still be 16 or 17, or are we taking 11, aye? Or, and then?
We could renumber.
16, yes, ma'am.
I would like to, if you renumber. So that would make those 15 and 16. Maybe it sounds like we might get out of here before midnight. Y'all didn't know you were here for the marathon, did you? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Freeman. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Okay, let's look at delegations. Okay, David, not sure I can pronounce your name.
Grover.
Okay, if you'll please step to podium, tell us your name and your address, please.
I'm David Grover, Mr. Whitehurst Road. Got the, B is in the word, R-O-D-E, Grover. I'm here concerned about vehicle traffic on our roads. We, I live in a residential section, and we're getting increased tractor-trailer traffic. I've spoken with, I think it was Mr. Wilkins, in the Highway Department, and Mr. Jason Davidson in Elizabeth City, about getting some signs for no true trucks. I've had four mailboxes up every place. The street signs are being ripped down, and the, the, there's no reason tractor-trails cannot continue down Willington and go down Medical Center, instead of coming through. The distorted roads, the signs, the mailboxes, and everything else.
Now, what road do you live on? Whitehurst?
Whitehurst.
And do you know what the wake limit in that road is?
There is no wake limit for that. I would supersite the rest of the county six times, six and a half times, something like that, but.
Not, that's not, that's not prescribed by the wake limit?
No. But then, that was Mr. Wilkins, I think he's up in the, on 158 there. He said the easiest way is to put a couple no true truck, no true trucks out. That would, that would keep them on Willitz and then they'd go to Medical Center, instead of cutting through. There's no real reason for them to travel through there, because it's actually quicker if you stay on Willitz and, I guess, and travel.
Are you saying, if I may ask, are you saying that they're actually coming through the residential development of Whitehurst?
Right. They're speeding, they're blowing the horns, disturbing the neighborhood, everything else.
And may I, may I ask, are they large trucks, or?
The largest. We've had one go through there, took down the stop signs.
Tractor trailer type?
With extended. Now, just a regular tractor trailer, one couple with the extended rear end.
Like the Delta Car Out ones?
Right.
Is that road, is it narrow than the normal secondary roads, or?
It is right, right along Whitehurst, where out, and then they're going to swing, they're going to make a swing, they take down a mailbox, and they swing in, and they'll take down the street signs and everything else.
Are there?
They don't stop, they don't come back and say, "Knock your mailbox over," they just keep on going.
Are there any truckers that live there and park their trucks out there?
They park on the streets. I've had some help from, I don't think he's anywhere, Lieutenant Warren, where they, where actually they block half the road when they park them tonight, Emily and Kelly. And now, the, the problem, I've been told by the Highway Department is Kelly, there's about one block of Kelly that is private, so these trucks can park in that section of the road. It's never been taken up by the state. Three quarters of Kelly is, is state-run, and they can, they can stop and from doing that, but the, the one block of Kelly will reach straight to Medical Center, it's private. It's never been taken up by the state. I've been told the reason for that is there's no houses that aren't to the state that can take it over. Probably true.
These, these drive a lot, residents of that community?
No, they're not. They actually live on Medical Center. They actually live on Medical Center, but they're not a part, I've, I've told, it's not a part of the Whitehurst community. And they don't have to travel Whitehurst Road, they can travel Willitz to Medical Center. They don't have to cut through there at all, there's no rational reason for them to come through there. Now, I wrote a letter from the Commissioners May Speed, this Mr. Davidson along, which I waited two years, I didn't talk to him about getting some no true trucks, I've even often paid for the signs.
So you're requesting that the Commissioners send a letter to DOT?
Right.
Madam Chairman, I feel that we could send a letter to them, and they know that Mr. Whitehurst will come and court the issues, and discuss the need for signs, you know, what are they planning to do, or, you know, unless they're asking them, they're not responding, or if they have any, you know, decisions on what they're going to move forward in doing.
And I have a very, at least a comment, and a basic question. When you spoke with DOT, did you speak with someone on item 158 here?
I actually went to their offices, but to him, and Robert Wilkins, uh?
Wilkins, Mr. Wynn's there?
And he referred me to Jason Winslow, maybe Winslow. He referred me to Jason Davidson. I emailed him. I got a email back from him saying they're looking into it, and they've been looking into it for two years now. And then, the population is increasing in trucks over there.
Is the man you emailed, is he at the district office?
In Elizabeth City.
Okay, Commissioner Jordan, did you make that in a formal?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Madam Chairman, that we sent a letter to DOT requesting a response on what their attempts are for Whitehurst, and that you've had assistance to come to force, and that there are serious complaints, there are effects, his property as well as others in the area.
And include the safety of the.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Yes, ma'am, I'll second that motion.
A motion has been made to send a letter for the Commissioners to DOT to investigate situation on Whitehurst subdivision roads.
Based on complaints being brought forth by Mr. Grover.
Okay, any further discussion?
No discussion, but Commissioner Jordan would mind making sure that we add it in for the safety of, of, of our property.
Okay, hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. We will send a letter, hopefully we can get a response, and some action taken.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Swager, would you, we get this address to contact you?
Who's next to you, boy, I don't hear?
Matter of fact, God, man, we could send a copy, send him a copy of the letter once upon sight.
Well, they promised before they'd look into it. They said even to put up no marking signs, it would take several years to do this, so.
At least they know that you've come to someone else, or others again.
Well, I never did hear back from you, from Mr. Davidson. I've been a month now since I heard from him, and he said they would look into it, but I don't know how long it takes to work, but.
Sometimes the wheels have gotten pretty slow. I was getting there for us, too. He doesn't, it's not.
For two years, I think it's more than a time to do any stuff.
I agree, and that's a long time. But any response? Thank you. Okay, any, there's no other public comment, so we'll move on to 3B. Today, we have the pleasure of having Kathy Davidson, Alamo Commissioner Executive Director, and she's going to give us our stewardship report.
Well, do you have a copy of the report in your books? If not?
No, we do not.
I have a copy.
What are we doing? I'll, I can pick it up on my book, see, I was. Melissa keeps it straight. It's red. Thank you. We've, they try to keep it straight.
Well, thank you for having me here this, this afternoon, or actually this morning. And it's a pleasure to come to Gates County and talk about the Alamo Commission and the services we provide to Gates County, as well as the entire region. Just as an overview, the Alamo Commission was enabled by the General Assembly in 1968 as a planning district commission for the 10 northeast counties, which also includes Gates County. And then, in 1972, the federal government, U.S. Department of Commerce and Economic Development Administration, designated the commission in the 10 counties as the Northeast Economic Development District. So, we, we're two paths. Not only do we provide senior nutrition, aging, workforce, and rural transportation services, we also provide economic development services for, for our counties. And looking at the services, just as a snapshot, as you know, we provide home-delivered and congregant meals for Gates County. And looking at your population, you have 2,839 residents that are 60, that are of 60 or above, and this past year, you have 39 residents that received 6,553 home-delivered meals. And just to emphasize the importance of the home-delivered meals, as you know, sometimes those individuals, that home-delivered meal may be their only meal of the day. Many of the clients divide it up into three meals. They also, the visitation that they get from the volunteer is maybe the only person that they see for the entire day. So not only does that, they receive a meal, but they also receive a wellness check that's important for the viability of our, in the population. And then, looking at our congregant meals that are served at the center, you have 45 individuals that received 3,275 meals. And the county's share of providing, or the overmatch for those meals is $30,919. I appreciate, and I'm sure your seniors appreciate your contribution and your share in that. Then, when we move forward and look at the Home Community Care Block Grant Services under the Area Agency, what's serving?
There's gold around, you're applying the group of issues for the.
Yes, they're, they're in the current, under a current contract. There's two more years in that contract, and then it will go back out for bid. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Services, as well as family caregiver and long-term care and budsman services that are provided to the county, you'll see there, the list of services for medical transportation. There's 706 units of service, and that can be one trip or multiple trips to 20, for 20 clients. General transportation, 2,543 trips for 11. And then, in-home aid or in-home care is 2,652 hours of aid to 25 individuals. And, as you know, part of the importance of the in-home aid and in-home care is allowing the seniors to stay in their homes instead of being put into a nursing facility or a long-term care facility. And then, in-home respite services, 161 hours to three individuals. Now, that's a part of our family caregiver program. And, as you know, even if you've been a caregiver, not only for an aging relative, but a child, sometimes you just need a break. And the rest that services through family caregiver, our family caregiver allows there to be a break for those family members, so they can recharge their batteries, or if they have things that, medical things or other items that they need to take care of and are not able to provide the home care, we do have those services provided. And then, of course, we, we have institutional respite services, and sometimes there may not be a home aide available to provide the in-home respite services, but a family can have the institutional or have a, a family member put in a center just for, for a couple of days or hours. And then, our caregiver supplies and consumer-directed services, we've had 220 units of service to five individuals. Then, you also have 29 participants at senior games, and it's exciting to see those things go on. And this year, it was interesting, and I know the reports for last year, but one of the things that we started doing this year is the kickoff ceremonies, the opening ceremonies are during spring break. And we're requesting that a high school student be part of the volunteers for the games and to do the mentoring and support of our seniors. And it's amazing to see the excitement of the, the youth being partnered with the seniors on both sides. So, that's a good point of what we're, we're changing and providing a connection. And then, our long-term care budsman has had trainings, we're due complaints, and technical, provided technical assistance of 17 units. And the reason we don't list the number of clients is because of HIPAA, and that's confidential. She only reports that to the state. And the county's regular match of the Home and Community Care Block Grant was $14,417. And then, looking at workforce development, as you know, workforce is one of our strongest programs, and for our region to grow and to attract industry, we also have to strengthen our workforce. This past year, for youth and adult services, we provided 3,250 units of service that could be looking for jobs, resume building, as well as training for working, working smart and soft skills. We had 840 individuals that received those trainings. And if you'll, you'll notice, there's no cost to the county for those services. That, those services are funded through the State Department Division of Workforce Solutions. And then, our RPO planning services, 65 units of, yes, sir.
How do we publicize that? How do our citizens know how to use that service? Is it spread through PSS, or, I mean, what type of population, and just what kind of exposure do you have?
It's in the schools, PSS, social media, the community college. It's also online on, on the website. And if you, if you want us to bring additional flyers to the county, we can do that.
I think it would be good if we added on our website, county website, that assistance for workforce development.
Okay.
I think that would be something that we, the need process.
And I'll send you the, the link for that, Natalie.
We can just went through your, the whole Alamo Commission page.
Okay.
Specifically for workforce development, you know, resume development and that sort of thing. Of course, they go to your own site, but this is something that I think we, our people would take advantage of.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's interesting, part of those services is if you're, if you qualify for the program, not only can you receive your free education, but your transportation could be paid for, your childcare, your books, your uniforms, your testing. So it's important to, to take advantage of what's available. And we continue to work with our youth and adults, but one of the things that we've done this year is we've created a youth experience program, and it pays youth for 800 hours of service to receive on-the-job training. It used to be that you could only, adults were eligible for that, but with the change in the, the regulations, the Workforce Opportunity Investment Act, it's allowed the, the Workforce Development Board to bring some in-house services and adapt the program that fits with our population and the needs within our region.
So, how about the county? If the county hires someone, they could benefit from it, not the county itself, but the person who brings it on, they could benefit, or the county could benefit from that, what?
No, it's not, the local governments aren't eligible for it. It's for individuals and businesses. Just, just like, if we had to, if we wanted to hire someone to train them for a position, we could not do that, because we're considered a local government agency.
And you have to meet certain guidelines.
To qualify.
Well, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And if, if I may mention too, you also attach to our chamber.
Yes, absolutely.
Chamber of Commerce.
Absolutely. And that's one of the things with working and really pushing the workforce development program, is you'll see our certified work-ready communities and career pathways that we, we now have two certified communities within our region, Chilawn and Percolance County, and we're working on others in order to have that designation. We're the first two counties east of, of 95, so we're working, working diligently to get them all done. And then, obviously, you know about what's going on with the RPO and transportation planning, and providing services within, within the region. And then, looking at economic development, grant administration, advocacy, strategic planning, meeting facilitation, quarterly managers meetings, policy review and analysis, we provide those services as a part of your, your general per capita dues, and $8,100. And those per capita dues are based on your certified population. So, the bottom line is, when you, when you look at the number of services provided in Gates County last year, you received 19, or, excuse me, 1,020 clients received 19,494 units of service, be it a meal, transportation, in-home care, or workforce development services. And that cost the, the, the county's share of that was $55,459, which costs $2.84 per service. And just to put into comparison, one meal costs $5. So, the, the county, county is really getting an exceptional return on your investment, and we truly appreciate your, your contributions to the, the commission as well as your continued support of the services that we provide to Gates County, your residents and your businesses.
Okay, any comments or questions for?
Well, Mr. Swager, I have a question about, sort of, general transportation. There's like a lot of activity there.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that, under, we hear we have GITS?
And that's part of the, the, the committee uses GITS. So, the GITS, we actually pay the GITS to provide those services.
Okay.
So it's a, and it's actually a great partnership between the area agency and aging and the transportation.
That's what I thought it was going to be.
Absolutely. And, and I think that's a good way to partner. Not all area agencies on, on aging do that. What we find with our region, it, it creates a better partnership, where we can work with, within our counties and our communities to utilize the services that are already there.
Eliminates duplication of materials and people.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's being fiscally responsible.
Try to find for us to operate our system.
Yeah.
Another knowledge and science question.
You're fine.
Boris, who's coming by here, are we looking at the same contribution, about $5.5 or $2.04 per unit, or is there going to be another form or?
There is a, there is a slight increase. As you know, up until last year, for 13 years, the, the commission had not raised our dues and provided services for, for the region. And we've increased our dues, two more, two more. And we've increased our dues two more, two more cents to seventy cents per capita, but we've also invested those funds into providing more services within the region as well as, um, looking at how we provide non-duplicated services, but have a, a stronger investment within our communities, workforce development being one of them.
So we're probably talking three dollars and some fifty-some cents for two thousand seven.
Potentially, yes. And it all, all depends on, that number is based on how many services are provided as well as how many, um, individuals participate within the programs.
And we get the pledge plan, Pope Aveon Law Commission already.
Yeah.
It's in the door.
Yes. You know, and one of the, the things that's interesting is that the dues that are requested are not just for the operation of the commission, they're for matching grants for economic development as well as the match for the, um, Home and Community Care Block grant. There are specific, um, percentages, regulatory amounts that have to be matched in order for us to continue to receive those funds from the state and federal government.
Well, Stacey, you're clapping.
Thank you for having me. I always enjoy being in the news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're the garden spot. Don't tell the old families. Okay, and now we move on to Dr. Mason, who's the E I C executive director.
Thank you very kindly. Good morning, Madam Chair, uh, to the board members of the Gates County Commissioners and certainly to your administrative team. Uh, Madam Chair, let me say thank you for allowing me some space and time, uh, to share in my estimation, some very exciting news that will be very enriching, enlightening, and edifying regarding the services that we offer the citizens, the great citizens here, uh, in Gates County. Again, my name is Dr. Landon Mason. I'm honored to serve as the executive director of the Economic Improvement Council Community Action Agency located in Edenton, North Carolina. Very briefly, my purpose this morning is threefold. One, I wanted to introduce myself as the executive director, uh, serving thirteen counties in northeast North Carolina, uh, Gates County, of course, being one of those counties. Uh, secondly, to bring some enlightenment on the work that we are doing here, uh, in Gates County. And then lastly, to share with you in our O I, or a return of investment on the services that we, uh, share. Uh, the mission, of course, of the Economic Improvement Council is to promote the economic, physical, and social well-being of its customers by providing quality services to assist low-income people to become self-sufficient. Uh, you are aware, back in nineteen sixty-four, there was a national response to poverty launched by former President Lundy Johnson and he waged war on poverty back in nineteen sixty-four. We are still dealing with this world phenomenon of poverty and so I'm honored to serve as a voice for the voices here, uh, in Gates County. Mr. Albert West III, he serves as our president of a twenty-one member board and we are honored, uh, to have on our board of directors from Gates County that bring strong advocacy, uh, to our board in the person of Mr. Robert Williams. He serves as our vice president of board of directors and also Miss Cindy, uh, Smith Bower also serves in that capacity. Uh, Mr. Robert Williams serves, of course, as an appointment from the county commissioners and I want you to know he is doing a phenomenal job there in Edenton. He's very, very engaged. Matter of fact, on yesterday, this is not a part, uh, of my presentation, but we just did some visitations on a new designation that we acquired, uh, Martin Pitt in Oxford. We do have presence serving the Heston community in that particular, uh, in that local county. And Mr. Robert Williams, of course, gave himself and his time to come in to oversee and to engage in his fiduciary responsibilities with the agency. And so he's just not, uh, a sitting board member that engages whenever he is actively engaged and he's serving currently, uh, as our vice president. We are humbled and we are honored, uh, to have his level of expertise along with the other twenty members of the board sharing on, uh, our board meetings. Uh, again, of course, we are E I C, uh, we provide, uh, services, uh, in the Gates County community. We have four programs. We have a Heston program, uh, of course, that provides, uh, high-quality comprehensive preschool experiences to children ages three and five. I'm talking fast because I know you got a lot on your agenda and I certainly not here to, uh, delay for, uh, the time. But in that Heston program, of course, we are serving, uh, children here in Gates and all of our services are completely at no cost. I don't like to say that the services are free. I like to say that the services, there are no child, there are no costs to the family, families because, uh, these services, they really cost a lot of money, uh, to operate quality services. And so the Heston program, in addition to the Heston program, uh, there is a community services block grant program, uh, and it is a sufficiency, uh, type of assistance designed to empower people to take control of their lives, uh, being independent and productive members in their community. Case managers work with them individually to empower them, uh, to pursue goals that they have, uh, and dreams and so, and hopes that that can come in return and impact, uh, the community here, uh, in Gates. We also have a Section Eight Housing voucher program. And of course, um, the purpose of that program is to assist low-income families, uh, to increase their quality of living. And lastly, we have a weatherization program, uh, that is there to reduce, uh, energy costs by providing, uh, energy efficiency to, uh, homes. Our weatherization services, uh, reduces the average energy cost of homes that we go in and out, uh, somewhere between two hundred and three hundred dollars a month. We go into that home, if that particular family qualifies, and we do a, what we call an air ceiling of, of the home, we do insulation of the home. And of course, uh, we provide even air assistance to that home. There are few incidentals that the state will allow us to do, uh, but it has to be connected to the energy efficiency, uh, of the home. And so I know you are aware, as commissioners, uh, back in two thousand fifteen, Access North Carolina stated that there was almost thirteen thousand people, uh, living here in Gates County. And out of that, almost thirteen thousand people that were living in Gates, uh, there were about thirteen percent of that population living in poverty. Uh, as a result of that, uh, what we discover is out of the roughly, at, uh, twenty fifteen report, like twelve thousand two hundred and ninety, that was twenty fifteen report, we're now in twenty seventeen. And so we know those numbers, of course, has increased over time. And so what we understand is that our agency commissioners was able, Madam Chair, to serve fifty-nine families here in Gates County by way of Heston services, weatherization services, Section Eight Housing voucher, and also our C S B G program. If you allow me about thirty seconds to give you, uh, some data of return on investment as it relates to, uh, Gates County. What we know is that the E I C, uh, we spent a total of three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars here in Gates County. That three hundred plus thousand dollars, uh, as it relates to impacting those families, those fifty-nine families that are living below the poverty guidelines, uh, we come, we serve in assistance and as a result of our service, the county commissioners do not have to worry about trying to leverage dollars on that end, uh, to impact and to increase their quality of lives. And so with our weatherization program, uh, in fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and I will appear, uh, before the commissioners to give a return of investment on sixteen-seventeen. We're still in sixteen-seventeen and we'll close that on June thirtieth. But as the executive director, I, I know and I believe that I owe you an explanation on the return of investment as it relates to federal dollars. We are caretakers, we are stewards, and of course, we have public trust in what we're doing and there's transparency and integrity to what we're doing. And so in our weatherization program, we assisted nine families here in Gates County, which of that, um, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, that's about fifteen percent of that three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. In that, we went into those homes, of course, when those families qualified, we went in the home and we provided air ceiling services to the home, we did a safety check of the home, we did insulation to the home, and we also, if needed, at that particular home, if that H A P unit did not spec out to North Carolina standards, then of course, they received a brand-new heated and air unit in that home at no cost to them. Our C S B G program, there is about four citizens that we are working with. We're working with them hand in hand to bring them above the poverty, uh, guidelines. And that's of course, seven percent of that three hundred plus thousand dollars. Our Heston program, uh, we serve twenty children here in Gates County. And we are located, uh, at your school, not even two miles from here. We're located at the, uh, Camden, um, superintendent was so gracious, uh, to allow us space in there. Of course, we rent it and of course, we, uh, acquire meals from the actual cafeteria. Again, we're here serving children, but we're also empowering, uh, the, uh, community here in Gates. It's kind of assisting in the economic infrastructure. As a result of that, those twenty children makes up about thirty-four percent of that three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And then as a Section Eight Housing voucher program, my mom goes down, uh, we serve, of course, about twenty-six families and that makes up about forty-four percent of that three hundred and twenty-three thousand plus dollars. Our average, um, dollar spent per customer is, is well over sixteen thousand dollars per customer. And then of course, here, uh, the annual dollar spent was three hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, and so as we understand, with total population being well above twelve thousand people, uh, with about thirteen percent of the population living in poverty, I'm talking about living below the poverty guidelines, we are honored and we are humbled to come in and to assist them in the services, uh, that we provide. Uh, our office, of course, our central office, we are located in Edenton. Uh, we're on the worldwide web, E I C C A A dot org, uh, two five two four eight two four four five eight extension zero. My personal prime extension is, uh, one three seven. And when there are some concerns relative to low income, because that's our target audience, our target audience in all of our communities is helping, uh, those that have been disenfranchised economically and we take this work, uh, very seriously. In addition to serving as the executive director, I serve with a North Carolina Community Action, uh, State Board of Directors and I'm also part of the Region Four, which is the largest region in Heston that consists of eight states. I'm on to serve in that capacity. And so the information that we bring back into our region is to empower all of our citizens in the thirteen categories that we represent. I close on this premise, it embodies my universal meaning. Former President, late President Abraham Lincoln, he quoted, and I quote, "He has a heart to criticize who has a heart to help." That embodies my universal meaning and we are here to make a difference here in the lives of the great citizens here in Gates County. I'm not asking for nothing, I'm coming to basically share information to enlighten you on the services that we offer, uh, the citizens of Gates. And so if there are any questions, kindness, and so, or observations, I'd be more than glad to share.
I have said a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
How many counties do you oversee?
Thirteen, thirteen counties.
Thirteen. Um, and I know this Heston program that we provide for Gates County, we have twenty children, do you provide transportation?
We do not provide transportation here in Gates County.
But don't you provide it in all counties?
In other counties, we provide it. Uh, and I will offer this, that transportation is not mandated by Heston. Uh, transportation, of course, we have a responsibility to ensure the children get to school, but transportation is something that, uh, agencies are not required to have. Now we have it because there are some issues in other counties that will inhibit our A D A, which our, which is our amnesty of attendance. Uh, but to answer your question, no, ma'am, we do not have transportation here in Gates.
And what other counties do you not have?
Uh, we do not have transportation in, uh, Camden County, we do not have transportation, let me call that the thirteen counties. Uh, we serve Camden, Chilwell, Currituck, Dare, Gates, Hyde, uh, Pasquetan, Purquimmons, um, uh, Washington, Chilwell, Martin Pitt, and Oxford. We do not have transportation in Pasquetan County. Uh, so we don't have transportation in Gates, we don't have transportation in Pasquetan, uh, we don't have transportation in, uh, this larger part of Pitt County. Uh, we don't, we offer just two buses, but next year there'll be no transportation offered in Pitt County. And we do not offer transportation, uh, of course, uh, like I said, Camden, Pasquetan, Gates. Uh, this county that we do not offer, uh, transportation. And only that, of course, um, you've got things that governs those decisions. Uh, we do not, in our, um, in our, in our area of work, uh, we are governed by documentation, we are governed by a community assessment that drives our data. And we understand that Gates, along with other counties, are deprived, uh, in a lot of ways, infrastructure. We understand that. But of course, uh, there will become other areas of interest that community's gonna have to, to deal with because it's a growing phenomenon even in other counties. So we do recognize that that is, that can be problematic, uh, for the citizens in Gates. We do recognize that. But we, however, we do not offer service. Parents, of course, they, um, are encouraged to have a kids', uh, service, transportation service, uh, that, uh, children are able to access. Uh, and of course, uh, there are other modes and means that parents work together to get them there. And so to answer your question, uh, Madam Chair, no, ma'am, we do not offer transportation in Gates County.
Dr. Mason, um, a little debate with all of these programs, but Community Service Block Grant, uh, not real clear on how a selection pool is developed and if there are age limits in addition to qualified, uh, financial limits. But what is the, um, how do you develop a selection pool? I mean, so that I'll, this is get a fair selection.
Absolutely, absolutely. And all of our, we have now intake processes, we have what we call this A R four C A database. And based upon the dynamics and the weights that's placed on these different categories, it actually lets us know, uh, which particular person, uh, based upon how it's weighted in the system, uh, different risk factors, so forth and so on. That lets us know which particular, uh, individual in terms of the, uh, Community Service Block Grant. It lets us know who we are to contact to be able to inquire on the service. And so none of this is, uh, you know, kind of handpicked, all of it goes through a database in even the interest of Heston children, uh, it goes through a database. Uh, our weatherization program, the information, the application is submitted, once it is submitted, it goes through a database and then the database sorts through and lets us know based upon different variables and factors, uh, who's next to be offered the services to.
I think Commissioners Jordan's concern, or question if I may, was how is it advertised?
How is it advertised? One way it is advertised is with my presidency at this morning. That's one way. Another way, we have C S B G, uh, C S B G case managers that are located and they have space here in Gates County advocating.
She's here one day a week.
Right, because she's seven additional counties. You're one percent right. Uh, and keep in mind, uh, a lot of this is determined by budgets, okay? So our budget, of course, with the amount of counties that we're serving, uh, state office has to approve, uh, our, a long-range, short-range strategic plan. And so, uh, a lot of these questions, considerations, uh, they are literally driven by data and obviously, as your commissioners, they're driven by budget. And so there were case worker here that serves in Gates County, also serves, uh, Purquimmons County and Chilwell County. Again, budget constraints from state office in Raleigh. Again, budget constraints from state office in Raleigh has, has a lot to do with how we're able, uh, to provide and mobilize team members within the counties that we serve.
I think this would be another situation where our county website can have a link, you know, uh, that kind of address these things, so that our citizens, if they ever need it, and want to see if they qualify, they can.
Absolutely, you can go right online and you can link us, we'd be more than honored to, uh, for that to take place, because if you link us in, if they're on the Gates County website, all of the information regarding every program comes up, point of contact information comes up, application comes up, they don't even have to come to the central office, they can fill out the application, they can come fax it to us, if need be, we'll come to them, because we're streaming services to ensure that they are user-friendly. We have two members on our board, of course, Vice President Mr. Michael Williams, strong advocate for services here in the county, and also the Cindy Smith Barber, they are advocates to be able to share, uh, what we're doing. And so, uh, with the, um, uh, announcements, flyers, uh, persons working, other case men, uh, other people that have been impacted by the service, they're able to give the word out. We've got plenty of success stories, uh, throughout the years with various, um, customers that have been impacted by the service, uh, they, of course, they're singing the tune. Then, of course, when there are meetings in the community, N W A C P meetings and other meetings that's already in place, then there, there are times when, uh, presentations are given to make the community aware of the services that we have to offer.
Is there a, is there an application period, like, you know, in spring or fall, or is it just, here's the website, you can fill out an application anytime near the year?
Beautiful questions, this is ongoing, we are accepting applications, uh, throughout the program deal, we never stop accepting them, and so, it's an ongoing process.
Someone makes an application, gets it.
Yes, sir.
And they don't get selected, but their application stays in the pool?
Absolutely.
And one other question, on three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us where all of your funding comes from?
Yes, sir, absolutely, absolutely. I hear all of our funding, our funding, of course, uh, is federal and state funded. Head Start, Head Start is federal funded, uh, CSBG and our weatherization program, they are federally funded programs, however, they are filtered down through the state for oversight.
Right.
Okay? And of course, our Secular Housing Voucher Program is a federally funded program, hood. Yes, sir.
Okay, just to tag on to that question, uh, out of those funds, are any specifically tagged for each county, Gates County, out of the three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty dollars, is there something in there that says, uh, eighty-five thousand or a hundred dollars should be allocated to Gates County?
Beautiful, awesome question, and the answer to that question, uh, is that the community assessment drives the allocation per county. And so, for instance, when we look at Head Start services here in Gates County, we only have, we only offer twenty enrollment opportunities for Gates County, is because when you look at the community assessment, the community assessment gives us data on every community. And when we look at the data, our decisions are made based upon your community assessment, based upon your infrastructure, all of that is in your community assessment, your community assessment tells us how many children are living in Gates County, zero or five, it tells us the racial breakdown, it gives us the median, uh, income breakdown, it gives us infrastructure. We go in and we look at other, uh, partners that are doing the same work, in other words, childcare facilities, and so, there are only so many children in every community, and once those children have been served, then of course, the data and the numbers that we receive, that drives that. And so, uh, the state office, when we submit our plan to them, uh, we want to make sure that there is in particular in weatherization, okay? Weatherization, you've probably been, um, uh, in tune with the latest, uh, verdicts from the, uh, President Trump administration, where they were talking about, uh, cutting, uh, social programs, and, and our LAHE DOE program, uh, had been those conversations about cutting the weatherization program. Well, uh, through our lobbyists, uh, Bill Bradley, that's worked so diligently on the heel, uh, he's constantly advocating because there's a new surge of legislators, and they are not really aware of the impact that community action brings to all of our communities. And so, to say that, Commissioner, uh, Jordan, uh, there was word that the Trump administration had zeroed out our weatherization LAHE program. Now the word is that there has been communications to the Trump administration, and the word is, we haven't got any official, but the word is that they have rescinded, zeroed it out, and what they are plan, what their plan is, is to add a few more dollars nationally to these particular services. And so, once, right now, we're still operating in our hood program under a continuing resolution, still working through the transition of administrations, and we do not formally, you know, have a, you know, budget that this is what we're working on for the fiscal year seventeen-eighteen, because we're still working with this whole notion of a continuing resolution. And so, with those things that are in place, our decisions are always based upon the community assessment, and data drives our decision.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vera County, for having me, and, um, again, uh, if we can be of any service to you, uh, our, our aim is to ensure that we keep our customers out top priority, and anything that we can do to help and to assist, uh, the citizens here in Gates, please, ma'am, please, sir, Captain E I C, Community Action, thanks, Kate.
Thank you so much. Have a safe trip.
Thank you, Vera County.
Okay, um, that is our nice delegation for this meeting, moving on to program number five, administrative reports, starting with my companion.
This is for March twenty-fifth through April the eighteenth, planning, personally handled twenty items that were related to planning zoning, including signing zoning permits, calls, emails, meetings, an interview for the planner position was held, and I'm still playing phone tag with references. The planning board and Board of Adjustment met in April, the planning board continues review tech, three physicians are up to reappointment, and that is later on the agenda. The Board of Adjustment also met, they denied a variance for a front setback with on Smith Road, approved a special use permit for a single wide motor home on Smith Road, and denied a special use permit for a solar farm along McCoy Lane and Highway Thirty-two North. There are two physicians that are also expiring at the end of the month, and the appointments will take place later during this meeting. Later during this meeting, we'll also discuss the option that was presented by Clear Scapes for the historic courthouse. The final resilient redevelopment program plan meeting was held in the beginning of April, and two projects have been identified as being most feasible to include in the proposal, and those, the cleaning of ditches along roadways and funding to connect a six-inch water main from the town of Gates to the main on the other side of Bennett Street on Thirty-seven. A third to raise houses in the flood plain on Savage Road will also be considered, and since this report, they have submitted all of the documents to me for final comments, and they also included a few others that I provided comments on. One of us for vending on houses on Harold Church Road, another was for, um, to raise houses also along the intersection of Highway Thirty-seven and Searle Road. On March the twenty-ninth, Commissioner Felton and I attended the P C G Landville meeting, as well as the Alamo Regional Solid Waste Management meeting, and discussion centered on reviewing the preliminary fiscal eighteen budget. On April the tenth, the Trade M C Economic Developers and I met with industrial extension staff at N C State to discuss marketing strategies for the five county area. Uh, April the tenth, Chair Hostel and I also participated in construction manager interviews with members of the Gates County Board of Ed, excuse me, that's supposed to have been April the twelfth, I'm sorry, we participated with construction manager interviews with Gates County Board of Education.
Any questions?
How are we doing, how are we along with that, uh, to have the construction management interview process?
That is in the hand of the Board of Education, they have to make a decision about what they're gonna do, and I've actually not heard back from that. I believe they have decided that they were gonna reject all of the bids that they had received and go another route, but have not heard back. And I actually saw Chair Felton, one day he stopped by, and he did not mention what had been decided at that point.
How many, uh, construction companies participated?
There were two that provided that information, and then there was another who came in to speak on something else.
Tax Department?
Good morning, hope you're all doing well. There are new pending refunds for the Tax Department this month, and I hope you had the opportunity to have that, uh, collector's report and review that. Any questions on the tax collector's report? Comments of, of anything? Okay, yeah, I will mention, we just, uh, foregone had Deputy Tax Collector Lord Chagas, we, we sent out another round of foreclosure letters, about eighty-eight, so we're hoping that'll, that'll spur some, some interest or some phone calls, so, uh, and everything.
And before we started the Board of Equalization and Redeem, had that first meeting, um, ended?
Yes, ma'am.
So that is currently, if you have a concern that you would like to express all the agreed evaluation numbers, you can contact with his lane.
That is correct, yeah.
And set up a formal request, I mean, a formal request.
That is correct, yes, ma'am, that'll be opened until June seventh, uh, and nine o'clock here in the courtroom, courthouse.
Uh, one here, are you done?
Well, yes, sir, if you had a question or anything, I'm just gonna mention the foreclosure property, that it's, um, you know, up for sale with the Lassiter property, we received some information on that, and that was filed in U Clerk's office, scheduled for May eighteenth. Um, the only thing pending is, uh, the R I P that was awarded for the demo will have to be added to that account in addition to the well-over fifty-one hundred dollars with the linked with taxes, so once we determine that amount, that'll be added, uh, as a lien, uh, and that bid amount will change reflective of the R I P that was awarded, so.
So currently, for that property is fifty, minimum bid is fifty-one?
Uh, yes, sir, five thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and about eighty-two cents in addition to that demo that, um, that will be added, yes, sir.
So, we've demolished that property already?
No, sir, the bid just went out and the contract was just awarded, and, um, cannot remember the dates that he's going to demolish that house and clean up the property.
Okay.
Sure, I see, uh, excuse me, Ms. Jim, quick. Suppose, um, someone was interested in purchasing the property and said, "I have the means to demolish the property myself," are we, are we too far along to where, um, that couldn't take place?
The contract's already been awarded and...
For this particular...
Yeah, I believe, Commissioner, once I did receive a phone call to that effect, the gentleman was interested in removing the debris, but it's a bit unique with the, um, I guess, the ingredients on that property, with the asbestos and the lead, it's a bit more intense, and, you know, can't just bury it, and there's specialized things, but I did receive a phone call to that very nature.
Well, let's, let's talk about this a little bit, because, uh, that's the city property, I believe, that, uh, while the house is dilapidated, it's basically almost falling, it's fallen down, and, uh, but you've got trees within it, you know, just to go in and take up out the debris is basically doing nothing, you would want the enhancement of that property unless you clean it up. I mean, you really need to clean, you need, you need to clean up the trees and stuff that's in there, uh, in order to make it even, uh, appealable to a certain extent. So, yeah, to me, you're kind of just giving away money to, because it's, it's grown up, you can hardly see, and without dilapidation, you gotta really look in there to see that there is a house. So, you know, who wants to clean it up? I'm sure that they need to make sure that they clean that area out if they could.
Well, yes, sir, yeah, with the underbrush.
It did not include removing trees, however, the person who done it has been out to the site, provided us a bid so they could do what the bid asked, and that was what was approved by the Commissioners at the last meeting, was remove everything that was housed, they have to level it back out, so it will involve removing, if there's trees, like you said, I've been by, there's trees running, crumbling, what looks like used to be the inside of the house, they'll have to remove those, and what's removed, the floorboards that are remaining.
You don't want, just, you know, there's something that is really not gonna help us in trying to sell the property as well. One other question, has anyone, anyone in that area called you and worried about it? Have you neighbors?
No, absolutely, there's some people who receive, they've sent out over seventeen letters to people, uh, who are joining property owners, some of them's in New York, some of them, uh, in Virginia, of course, uh, yeah, and a few visits to the tax office, uh, when they got that letter, when they saw the sign, of course, uh, imploring, um, you know, just what is the process, um, to bid, and really what's going on, I mean, that's, you know, we, we sent the letters encouraging, for joining property owners if they're interested, and just to let them know, hey, we've got this activity right by your property, you see something up and all, this is the nature, so, yes, sir, quite a few phone calls, in fact, well over, um, probably ten or more, including visits to the tax office.
Sounds like we might have some bids on there.
Um, yes, ma'am, yes.
Uh, any additional questions for our Tax Commissioner? Okay, moving on, uh, I hope, and just as kind of for the public, it's in our packet, um, we do have a one from D B and T, we have paid off the library, so that's no longer booked as a deal, so that's good news, uh, that we cut down the deal. Okay, move right along. Reports of old departments. Okay, um, I do, um, have some questions for just part of my education, um, concerning water, that did sit, and then Mr. Hedge passed it here, and Mrs. Henry sat here, uh, have you stepped to the podium? When, if you're ready to answer questions from D B. Good morning, how are you?
Just fine.
And, uh, listen, I'm just, um, you are a popular department, I get more phone calls on your department than anyone else's, um, has a, I really, for my self-education, I just want to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, um, most of my calls, and in fact, I've taken them right with one of my citizens, um, one of my neighbors down the road, gonna be pointed out at different things. Um, first of all, how many customers do we have in the system?
There's roughly forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred, and that's why I just kind of want to make sure I'm comparing apples to apples, and, um, when we do that, and how many miles of lines do we have?
Right, five hundred.
Five?
Five hundred miles.
Five hundred miles. Okay, um, as we, um, of course, our system has been in place now for numerous years, um, we do have leaks that are occurring, um, what is the procedure for your department in dealing with leaks?
When we're notified of leaks, we'll put them on the list, and we'll try to get them as soon as possible. We do have a backlog of leaks that have constantly got pumped from power, and we went through this towards the end of last year, um, and we've got majority of that log of leaks taken care of.
Well, how many leaks do you say are on that backlog at present time?
I think there's about six or seven.
Six or seven?
And all but one of those leaks is minimal flow, it, it's just a saturated wet spot with a trickle. It is a saturated wet spot with a trickle of water. And those leaks, all but one of those leaks on major highways with very minimal shoulders with multiple fibers. So, it's going to take at least a five-person crew to control traffic and then safely repair those leaks.
Okay, and so you, what would you say is the average time, once a leak is reported, that it is fixed?
We changed things up last year. Now, as we're notified of leaks, the new leaks, we're trying to get those within the month of notification. And then mix in the older leaks as we can. So, when I constantly get it further and further behind, we're addressing leaks as they're presented or according to customer service and identify it.
Okay, so if I have a leak and I report it, I would call, who would I call? Would I call the border department?
You would call customer service and that's great.
Customer service.
Or we would send, I don't call staff to investigate a leak, document the address, cross street, et cetera, add it to the list. That information then comes back to me and we'll discuss and try to create a schedule.
Okay, I see.
This spring, I was hoping to have jumped on leaks already, but as you know, we have the renovations that's been going on with the plant, with contractors in and out all day. Well, one has failed and we've had contractors in and out trying to retrieve that well because when it broke, it dropped a hundred and seventy foot down the well cases and that's opened up a whole new can of worms. All the rain has done a battle, hawking on myself as well as Tiffany with keeping pre- board levels down and managing with the spray field due to the seasonal rains for Matthew and the storm prior to that and then this latest rains over twenty. Also, the one once, I had two separate employees that were out for extended duration. I played both of them on F and LA, but put me short staff. And spring of the year is all my annual reports to do for dinner as well as budget, CCR, level water supply plan. There's multiple things that pulled me out of the field and other responsibilities that I'm responsible for, which then leaves me for three employees.
Okay, let me ask you this. Do you have five if everybody's at work besides yourself, correct?
No.
Three?
Three, water one sword and myself makes five.
Okay, and you can call on meter readers to...
But not during the first half of the month because unless it's an emergency and I have to, because they're on the timeline to get the meters ready.
But the last few weeks of the month, you can do it?
No, the last three to four days is tied up with lockouts and reconnects.
But there is some...
There is about a week or so of time period, yes.
Can your crew work with I, you being physically present?
They can. It's a back route or somewhere like that. It's not as much me being present, it's just manpower, traffic control, and a safety concern. If a OSHA representative comes by and I've got a three-person crew out there working on the side of a busy highway, that won't end well.
As you said, you know, you said you have the backlog of whatever. On your report that we get every month, you said all customers create work orders, address, re-read, check the leaks and all. So, but we have a backlog, so all of them are not taken care of.
Well, that's referring to the work orders that's created through customer service as far as lockouts, reconnects, account disability. That's what I'm referring to is work order. They don't actually stimulate a work order for leak repairs. That's just a work order to investigate.
Okay, so this is not, well, it's checked for leaks anyway?
Well, that's part of the board leak. When they call in, we'll go check the leak and then it comes to all of them.
Okay, I guess I live on the road that has the most leaks in town.
Yes, ma'am, you do. Highway thirty-two has been interested.
It's been, okay. I'll just say this. Okay, Steve Parker, that's on one fifty-eight, and I talked to his wife last night. That leak line has been reported for two years.
What's that address on that?
US Highway one fifty-eight, it was at the Derrick Fields Place, as I know it. It's kind of near by Mr. Saunders, lives...
Is that the one right beside Dixie Highway?
No, 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 uh-uh. And Gilbert Baldwin has called it in as well. He called it in on July's, July's twenty-eighth.
Past Sugar Run, one fifty-eight, past Sugar Run, just past Sugar Run.
That's the one that's got the pothole in front of it.
Correct.
Yes, I'm aware of that. I don't know what I'm going to have to do with that. Whatever I do, their driveway is going to be demolished. And the monumental flow, that was one of the reasons, and that's another one, water means the opposite side of the road. There's, we've had it call in, there are fibers there in conflict. And the minimal amount of flow, it just keeps getting pushed off.
And it gets hit bigger, but...
I have the kind of, I still just a minimal trickle.
Well...
And the calls keep coming.
And calls keep coming and, you know, I would, and do you realize that, I know you do, that if something's leaking at six drops a minute, that in the course of the year, that's what three thousand gallons? And some of this is bubbling up because I've been, I've stopped to look and that's more than a drop, so. But going on, from Highway thirty-two, from stoplight, Yvonne Riddick, who's that in...
I have three on Highway thirty-two side.
Yes.
I have one right at Full Costum. I have one right near about the Masonics Lodge, wherever that lodge is.
That's Yvonne's.
And I have one that we just found that's just past Muddy Cross.
Well, Yvonne's was called in on twelve sixteen eleven because I called it in myself.
Right.
So, I also called one in Keys Crossroads and that had been reported for two years.
The one at Keys Crossroads has been there for more than two years. That leaks and then when weather breaks, that reseals. That's a T-intersection and PVC gaskets with a shrink and swell from hot to cold, it'll leak and keep a second, there's no run to it, it just keeps a wet spot there at intersection. And then when season changes, it dries up and there's no leak there. So, that one has not, and if you notice, there's a phone cable and I think there's six or seven wires and cables within five foot of where that saturated spot is.
I'm sure there is, this is a major intersection.
Right.
And of course, on NC Highway thirty-two, number one seventy-two, that's...
That's the one I called for.
Yeah, and number, NC thirty-two, number one fourteen, on both, on the road across the ditch in front of the new meter. New meter was put in six months ago and it was a leak layer.
Where's it at, what's that address?
It's Charlie, oh, Chapel's, it's, I don't know.
Seven, eight, around the corner, just other side of Muddy Cross?
No, 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 it's up there by where the high set was going, that they put in a modular and a brick home right there, small brick home, is right as you come, I've crossed the bridge from Sunbury going toward Cooper.
I'm not aware of a leak. I know one by the double wide right before you get to Costco, but I'm not aware of one.
Well, there is one there as well. But, you know, like I say, we get calls all the time and, you know, it's hard to say when they say, well, it's been there two years. And I've done some checking with counties surrounding us and most of those, you know, leaks are taken care of very quickly. How long do you think it will take you to get called up?
If all goes well, I'm hoping to have everything caught up for this summer. That's my goal. But it's hard for me to say with the chemical breakdowns and renovations and the contractors that have scattered all over the county. You would be, maybe it was, the Highway thirty-two repair job from Hurricane Matthew was completed yesterday.
Thank you for that.
The one on one fifty-eight was completed a couple of weeks ago. So, now our system, as far as Hurricane Matthew is concerned, has been completely renovated and back to a normal operating state.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Let me kind of piggyback on this, maybe I can give you a copy of this as well. This is a leak that was called in about two years ago. And it's on thirty-two, they contacted me, I get phone calls too, Madam Chairman. And this leak is pretty bad, it's probably hard to decipher from that picture, but it's running. And it's on thirty-two, matter of fact, Danny, I told him about this one.
Is this the one that was right there by Costco?
Yes, it's Costco.
That one has been called in and located and the intention for this week to try to get the three on thirty-two done, but when the lift station went down this week and I've got one pump sitting on the ground from that, and there's been multiple issues that keeps drawing me off of repairs and I can't send a three-person crew on thirty-two or four-person crew on thirty-two with little to no shoulders to do these repairs.
Well, here's my point. We've got a system that's nearly forty years old.
Yes, sir.
And probably the first ten or fifteen years, leaks were basically not an odd event because we didn't have, the system is new, the system's getting older. From a quality control standpoint, you know, the system is basically paid for itself, it's probably making a little money on water department. We have got to keep quality control at an acceptable level. So, what does that mean? Now that I don't have a new system, guess what? I might have to develop a means of repairing my own system to make sure that I don't have leaks, that the quality of providing water is not dropping, that I can provide correction of leaks in an acceptable timeframe. It's just a part of operation. It's not that, that you're not working as hard as you can, but now you're going to have to add a new dimension to your quality control because you don't have a new system. It's just like automobile. It gets old, guess what? I'm going to have more repair dealers. And this is just a part of operations, so I feel that we need to make provision for leaks because we've got an old system and it's basically paid for itself, but we need to put it in place somehow to manage it within an acceptable quality level.
I agree. I would love to have the ability to send a staff out without me being present, have enough folks to feel comfortable. And through my competent person class and training certification, as well as my staff has, that they're comfortable working with traffic control, extra items on the hole for collapses. There's multiple dimensions for companies, not just as simple as dig a hole, jump down there and fix it or repair it. I would like to have more staff in it.
Well, why can't we bring in a vendor? Why can't we call in a contractor?
We could contract some of these leaks. And I had typically contracted leaks out that had a greater liability than what we normally deal with. If there's circumstances or equipment needed that we don't have, if there's liability due to fibers and proximity of fibers that has a potential to be cut, they have, they're insured to cover themselves and I have called vendors and the vendors.
What I'm saying is also, is that if we've got fifty leaks on boats right now, and if you advertise to get those fifty leaks taken care of and, you know, specify on how we're going to do it, make sure that it's going to last fifteen, twenty years, whatever the last man is. And you could get someone to come in, it would be feasible for them instead of one leak, to come in, take your whole, shebang, and let's say you count them. Something, this is something from a management standpoint to think about so that we can be, you know, we've got a water system that's forty years old and our people are not satisfied with the fact that they can't cut grass over there or their ditch is walling out because we've got a leak that's been there for six months. And, you know, this is not acceptable. And so, we just got to try to manage it and if that's a way of doing it, is putting it all together and maybe you won't need a subcontract for the next two years, but we can get them all. But this is just some thoughts from a management perspective, which might want to look at in order to try to make sure we've got a quality system that is serving our people the way that they need to be served.
Could I could just do a couple more comments or questions? When we create a form, maybe we need to create a form on our report, tell us how many leaks you fixed. If people have an idea that things are getting done, you know, I think phone calls will stop. Or not, I don't mind any phone calls and I have this pad of paper, I have my phone and I drop down what my concerns are. But if we could see progress, that we are chipping away at this backlog, I think that would be helpful, not only to the Commissioners, so as to, well, we're working on it, we haven't, you know, there are some problems come along, we can't get them to a test if we want, but, okay, we, this month we've dealt so many, we've dealt so many.
And I think that's on your Commissioners' board as far as keeping leaks repaired.
I mean, that's enough, but you just have a six-week water lane to repair on Highway thirty-two side, but that's the one down there by Riddick and... Now, I know...
I have, and select some new water meters, there's three, there's two new ones prepared.
I know, but I know...
One sixteen inch, nine inches prepared.
But I think it's, I think we knew where they were, the leak system were prepared. Yes.
So, you'd like to report like code enforcement officer?
Yes.
So, when I put that there, you just want to put a link as to where they're location?
Yeah, location, date reported, the date fixed, and we go back, okay, reported and have fixed by this date so that we have an idea. All hydrants are not in use, I mean, are not using?
There's one in Gatesville right in front of the water tower that's not working, but you can stand there and see two more hydrants probably. There is one at intersection of Page Riddick and Wellington Road that's actually on a four-inch line, so that's not classified as a hydrant, that's just a blow-off, but there's one right across the intersection at Kip Store. There is one that we can't get to because it's so wet at the thirty-two, Jordan County line, down in that swamp.
That water swamp?
No.
At, was the home beyond Brant's?
Yes, beyond Brant's, right, right, literally at the county line. And then there's a couple of blow-offs of some four-inch that are not for fire suppression, the fire party, that's not a fire hydrant, it's actually a...
So, it has like three blow-offs and by three hydrants, they're not working.
There's only two hydrants, so that's the two blow-offs. That's the one that I think you were talking about.
And just one other thing, how many gallons of water do we pump? You know, I don't know, you would know that if you can give me this information each year, how many, how many gallons you pump, either pumps, and how much is billed, how much of the gallons are billed and what is the discrepancy?
That would have to be corresponded with the customer service department.
And I know there's going to be some loss of water because when you flush our pipes, a fire hydrant, and there's sometimes backflow, you kind of do it twice, I understand that.
I would say it's around a twenty, it fluctuates, I believe, between twelve and twenty-three or twenty-four percent difference.
Difference.
What water loss, in that range since I've been here.
Well, I know that the American Water Association says that they recommend that loss should be around ten percent.
Right, as far as water loss.
Yeah, but that's not billed.
But see, we're not metered to monitor process water loss, which is your hydrant flushing, your fire departments, but we have no way of metering or monitoring what that water loss is.
Well, that's why I understood, that, you know, there's some loss of water in any system, but what I was just trying to figure out, I know what we're losing to the leaks and all.
I have a couple of questions. Is it possible that when you have a high-traffic area, is it possible that D and T can assist us with the flag and the sign?
I would like to say yes, and if I'm in a real pinch, they might would, but their staff has been cut so short that they can't keep their head above their body.
Natalie, would you think that they're mandated and probably not to do anything like that? You're one sewer guy, other than yourself, has he got certifications?
She's had all of her Virginia certifications and she has been to one school and she's testing other than North Carolina.
Okay, very good. And the other thing is, only fiber issue, I know probably nobody would like to dig around with us, but they do come and map out where the fibers are?
They come and mark, but they have a twenty-four inch window on either side of their mark that still has to be shoveled up. Well, that's a four-foot radius of the mark from two foot each side of the mark.
And I think it's one scenario, you said there were like five, five fibers at that one intersection, whatever. Do they come and stay... Do they come and stay there?
No.
They don't come over.
The only one that wants to come and stay is Piedmont Natural Gas and AT&amp;T Fiber.
Thank you.
Okay, well, listen, Matthew, you helped me a lot to educate me about the these and I'm, I'm I saw me able to answer questions and more.
And a lot of them have, there's some leaks that reported that don't come to me. They go through, they go through customer service, they come to whoever's on the call and they write it on a list and it's never brought to my attention. I don't see that list all the time until I ask for it. So there is a slight disconnect there as far as the timeline and when I actually discover a leak. I'm not the one in the field constantly. And, you know, that's something that I can improve on as far as how that's documented and how it's addressed.
And I think we need to keep a form for that when a leak is called in, put the name, the address, the date, and then they give a copy to you, one being kept in the customer service, and then they say, I've done my part.
You're doing that.
Okay, great. And I know, Nate, Mrs. Henderson says on your report that your individuals put in two meters, right? So they do put in meters.
Replace.
Replace meters, okay, replace meters. So they can do that, but that takes a little burden off, not much.
They can do that since it's been split, okay?
And again, I would strongly ask and advocate that you look at the means of keeping leaks minimal from pounding of irrigation.
That is how we have changed since this come up last fall. Is we're now, as leaks are identified, we're trying to address those in a more immediate manner and then take the older leaks and mix them in. So we're not constantly letting everything lag behind. We're addressing new leaks and then trying to gradually catch up with the previous leaks.
That's a good idea, I think that's on the actual control, give service consideration.
I would not be opposed to doing that as long as the funds are available.
Well, thank you so much for coming and I'd like to say clarifying and helping us understand the situation. But I do appreciate that.
And anytime somebody calls and they give forward them my number and let me help them, a lot of times I can explain things that you wouldn't necessarily have the technical knowledge to really explain and let them understand.
Okay, what is your number? I'll be glad if it is on that. To me, a leak is a leak.
Right. When they don't understand what else goes in, that's not the only job we have. And unfortunately, the way this thirty-eight-year system has treated me in the past six months, it's been a nightmare. And there's been one trouble after another, and that's not even including leaks.
But they can run their lawn mower in that area, cut their rad.
Maybe an officer will come out there and we can run a leak for them.
But if they don't pay their water bill, guess what we're gonna do? We're gonna cut one off. We expect for our citizens to be prompt, for them to be responsible. And they can expect the same from us. And I think it's fair. So, you know, we, the system's paid for itself. We should be making money.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you for getting those thanks from Bert and Matthew Dylan. That's a big job, just. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, give a forced break. So let's be back in here, I say five minutes, let's be back here at quarter to twelve. That's ten minutes, but time to get up. We'll do a ten-minute break. Okay. Thank, yes.
I don't believe we have a finance for what we're intact for, we didn't have finance for what we're breaking apart.
We don't normally do a verbal comments report unless you've got specific questions.
Well, I just have a comment, but we can go ahead and, after our next part.
I can see that.
Well, let me just make this kind of on page fourteen of fourteen of your revenue status. Page fourteen.
Of sixty-three. No, it's the very last page, right, four.
The last page of revenue status.
And page fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen. Do you have a copy of that?
Who can come over here?
Page fourteen, fourteen. Under miscellaneous revenue, item six-two-thirty, thirty-nine, eighty-nine, we estimated zero revenue for the year. We received ten million, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and then getting a percentage collective of zero. Recognize that we didn't allocate anything, but it should show up as a plus.
That's a logistics issue that we cannot correct.
Well, I kind of thought that maybe if I wanted to point it out because, you know, we've collected a thousand percent based on what we're, what we're making. So, you know, these are income we didn't, a plan for, or we didn't receive. And it is a plus rather than a zero. So, but it just caught my eye because I looked at the, what's going on?
Yeah, there was a couple of different accounts that were impacted. And we are working with logistics to figure out why it's not updating the accounts appropriately. It is a software issue.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Liz, for your talk. You're welcome. Okay, going on with the departments and this is emergency management, Mr. Wynn.
Thank you for your time. The report speaks for itself. There was an additional letter that was number eleven on new business that I would like to address at this time if that's possible.
Yes, sir. Oh, well, we did that.
Yes, ma'am. That letter was in reference to our upcoming fire suppression rating schedule. It happens every five years allegedly with the Office of State Fire Department. We have been over that time because of staffing issues at state level. It's not a problem with anything we're doing, it's just an issue with staffing there. We are due for a rating reclassification, hopefully within this twelve months. They have told us to prepare things. Part of that preparation is we have to have fire district maps. Without getting into the weeds of the technicalities, we're on a six-mile district, which benefits the insurance pays. They require a five-mile district to indicate on the map. Therefore, we have to have, for each fire station, we have to have a map that shows all the hydrants, the locations of the departments. The five-mile district, the four-mile district, and road miles indicated in quantitative color changes within that district. So there's a lot of GIS work that they're requesting they have for each department when they come. I have contacted our vendor, Atlas, and Wilmington, and they have given me a quote of two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to produce those maps. That was, we have cut corners and narrowed this down as low as we can get it. This is actually with me going to Wilmington so they don't have to pay travel to come up here. Also, we don't have to pay travel for them to come up here, produce those maps and would have them ready for the rating meeting. My request to you was that if you could find funds to pay that two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to alleviate six hundred dollars per department, per fire department. Something that they need to have, but it benefits our citizens. It's, you know, you're paying them. I just thought it would be a welcome gesture if the commissioners would turn to them.
We take a look at any department, any of your department funds, how they're situated.
No, there's no money in his budget. I recommend that this come out of the emergency scene for someone who has one item on the governing board.
And we have got money, but.
What is, what ours may have?
Well, you have budget amendments later that also request money, but there's still, well, as of this last report that you received, there's thirty-one thousand dollars remaining in that.
What's that, Katie?
Miscellaneous emergency.
And normally, Billy, I don't have that memo, but normally this would be responsibility of any of the fire department.
It is not. The ratings come in from the county and all the information comes to me. But when they are coming is unique, it's not on a normal schedule. And what they're requesting in those maps is unique per opportunity.
They'll have to have a map before they come?
That's part of their inspection. They will inspect a myriad of things when they come, the map just being one part of that.
What is the board?
I'll make a motion that we produce the funds to cover this expense and whether we take it out of the fund dollars or what, I'll leave that up to our department.
Well, the county manager has recommended coming out of our miscellaneous emergency. We've got thirty-eight thousand, we've got thirty-one thousand left. How much do you say is coming out there?
Well, it depends on if you approve all the budget amendments, but that would still leave you with more than enough money to pay for.
One and four.
Well, make that part of my motion that it comes out of this part.
Miscellaneous emergency fund of the governing board.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd like to add, or at least for us as commissioners to look at, should we move that into a line item for emergency management for the future or miscellaneous emergency? Yes, sir.
The problem with that, if I may, is that it may be three years down the road, it may be five years down the road. It just depends, it's not a routine expense.
I think the management will cost about eight years, I think.
I think so.
We'll just take it as it comes. No comment or question?
After, after the.
Okay, the motion before us is to recommend that we take two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars out of the miscellaneous emergency fund of the governing board to pay for these maps for the fire suppression rating schedule inspection. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, your comment?
There's a question.
Okay.
You said there's a myriad of things that they're not inspecting. Is there anything that you're able to do for each fire department to get them prepared for that inspection?
We have a list of items that each department has received, its call volumes. They'll be inspecting the nine-one-one center, the generators, the water system. There's just a lot of things. Each department does have that list of items and we've been having some discussion with the chiefs about, you know, to stand on that. We don't have a schedule yet. We've kind of been pre-alerted. We're gonna come, we're not gonna tell you when we're gonna come yet because they're just so far behind.
And you're major part of the inspection, you're there. As I hear Commissioner Felton say, that in eight years, there might be a chief at one of the fire departments that was not there the last time that we went and get caught in a bad position just because we didn't have knowledge.
Right, it's something we've been working on.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One other comment too, you know, Bill might want to emphasize something that this rating system affects your homeowner's policy big time. The better rating you got, the less money you pay every year for homeowners.
Actually, one of the recommendations for this map has, after the map is approved, after the map is produced, we have to bring the maps back to you to approve them. But there's a section of probably fifteen or twenty homes that we can significantly reduce that are insured if we can do these. It's really just changing the line, it doesn't really change, nobody's doing anything different, it just makes it more sense.
So everyone on the wrong side.
Wrong side of the road, that's right. Still on the wrong side of the tracks, he's on the wrong side of the road.
I think yours is a seven, six? Very good. The lower the number, the better.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Okay, and I did have one other animation for the commissioners. Thursday through Sunday, May the eighteenth through the twenty-first, we will be hosting in the Sandbanks a search and rescue exercise. There will be, right now there are seventy people registered. We think there's probably gonna be about a hundred search and rescue professionals from all over the state there. We have new this year, a dive team from Prequins County is coming. We have an equine team from Marnik County is coming. I'm not sure how that's gonna work out for us, but we have K-9 operators that will be there as well as teams. Some of you came last year to our first one, but I did want to specific, you're welcome to come at any point. It is at Gatlinton. It's gonna be out at Sandbanks Road this year, not at the river. So it'll be easier to find, we'll have signage out. But Friday evening, we have a catered meal. We'd like for you to come if you so desire. But I would like for you to let Melissa know because it is gonna be Friday Trent that night. So I want to make sure we've got enough food on hand.
What's that?
It's six o'clock, we'll eat at six-thirty. The teams come out of the field at six. And Melissa is, serves as our public information officer for emergencies. So she's serving as our public information officer for that, so we'll push everything through her and she can get me a list of few plans to attend. But love to have you there. I can't promise you undivided attention because it's gonna be a busy weekend, but I would like for you to kind of see what the other agencies in the state are doing.
I went last year and it was, it was very, very interesting. And I learned that how much our department is respected by the people who came a long ways off. They gave nothing to say, but good things about the service.
I too, Jack, attended and thanked Billy for the invitation. And while he's standing there, I want to thank him for his assistance in our wood and glory of it and his staff that is there, like by all.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other departments, Sheriff's Department?
Thank you for wanting to talk to me, speaking to you. It's again a knowledge to say before you, I commend the Gates County Sheriff's Office about their responsibilities, but even more than that, they will be on the call. And I told you a couple of months ago, the sergeant bringing home his business for you. But right now, Deputy Garrett Winslow here, come on Garrett. He's got his wife, his mom and dad as assistant here. Garrett is saying upon himself, this is not mandated by the state, it's not mandated by the county, it's not mandated by the sheriff, me. But Garrett is saying upon himself to go forward and receive his, some more education. And on the same day, which is kind of amazing because Garrett knew that he was gonna get his intermediate law enforcement certificate. And this is an intermediate certificate right here and it says, by virtue, and it pretty much states the same thing, but the main one I want to read is the next one. Garrett, this is your immediate law enforcement certificate that you petitioned the state of North Carolina, the North Carolina Department of Justice for. So Garrett, on March the twenty-fourth, received his intermediate law enforcement certificate. So congratulations on that, bud. This is what humbles my heart is that Garrett knew that there was a possibility that he had enough training hours plus his four years of college education. And this is a state of North Carolina Department of Justice, North Carolina Sheriff's Education Training Standards Commission. To all, to all to whom these persons may come, greetings. By virtue of authority vested by the laws of the state in the recognition of attainment of training and educational objective, commensurate with the role of a professional law enforcement officer and a personal devotion to service to the people of North Carolina. Attorney General, the Chairman and members of North Carolina Service Education and Training Standards Commission, due to authority vested in them by the laws of this state due hereby award to Garrett Wayne Winslow, this advanced law enforcement certificate. This was also done on March the twenty-fourth. So Garrett, knowing this, this has been signed by Attorney General Josh Stein and Chairman of the Commissioners and every sheriff and Sheriff's Education Association. So again, in presence of the commissioners, again, I want to award Garrett his advanced law enforcement certificate, which is the highest honor you can get in law enforcement. So congratulations to Garrett. And I'm gonna leave with this, it's. I'm gonna leave you with this, it's, it's, it, it humbles me to see my guys that want to get their education beyond what is expected of me. Only thing you have to do for me is graduate from basic law enforcement training. These guys take it upon themselves, I don't force them to go to school, I don't ask them to go to school, they come to me and say, Sheriff, can I go to a school? Garrett just took it upon himself to go to Selberg, Edinaville, to North, uh, Justice Academy, St. Eric, those two locations. And all around the state of North Carolina to ensure that he is a devoted professional law enforcement officer. So as this been said, I'd have about four or five people in my office now that has these advanced law enforcement certificates. The highest honor you can get for law enforcement, so I want you commissioners to take that into consideration, that these guys are doing this on their own behalf. Thank you for your time, rest in peace, Garrett.
Certainly, we echo the citizens of the sheriffs, that, uh, for Garrett. I've known Garrett a long time, and he's a former student of mine, so I predict that he'll do great things.
I'd like to see another twenty-five years.
Thank you so much. I believe that finishes up, uh, administrative courts, the last page is the county calendar. And, um, we, maybe we can do this later, by setting up these budget meetings, um.
Those, those meetings have already been set, those are just on your calendar, and all the department heads have been reminded that if they have questions about their, departmental budget, then they are to contact Ms. Lawrence to set up meetings during those times.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, uh, I was thinking that sometimes I have written down the differences, so if you...
The Tuesday is at three o'clock.
Because Ms. Jordan, I knew I had Tuesday night at one.
Yes.
And the budget meeting on Thursday is at six P.M., correct? Thank you. Okay, moving, there's no public hearings today, so we'll go to the old business, uh, ring in numeral seven. And the first is awarding bids for the sale of parcel zero-one dash zero-zero-six-seven-two. That was the sale of the Riddick property, and there was no bid.
Yes, there was one bid that was already seen, and Ms. Lawrence would get it. There was one bid, and it was the minimal bid that was required on this piece of property.
Well, it'll take a long time opening envelopes to see if we have some winning bids.
No, we, we've already had to open it, so that is not only bid, I believe the minimal was one thousand three hundred and one dollar.
I think you sent that out here. Oh, it was twenty-two cents.
It was some odd cent.
Some odd cent.
It wasn't an even number.
Okay. Well, this is one thousand three hundred and ten.
Okay. Whatever's on that paper is the correct one. Like I said, I did not have it in front of me, could not remember the exact amount.
Now, this, this problem is, uh, it's not the most, uh...
Desirable.
Desireable, yes. I would, I would think that, that we would move forward except for that bid, because take care of the expenses the county hasn't incurred. Let's see, upset, how long that has passed?
No, you have to post, you have to notify people that there was a bid accepted, and they have ten days to upset that bid.
So that, that date does not pass?
No, that would be after today.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept this bid of one thousand three hundred and ten dollars for a piece of, for a piece of property, um, known as, um...
The Wood, Woodley Riddick Homeside.
Okay, yeah, Woodley Riddick Homeside, that is on baseball lane.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion that we accept this, uh, bid of one thousand three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents. For the purchase of the property that is in Ovi.
Okay, motion has been made, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been, that made, upon your second, all those in favor?
I have a quick question. Barring upset bids, how long persons have requested to know how long to, um, receive the payment for? She understands that there's paperwork, she did not know if she had, after the upset bid, if it was ten days, if she had to come and pay the next day, if she had five days, if she had two days.
I think where the general statute, once it's accepted, she has, she has to pay that, that money, the scale, until the ten days, after the ten days, if there's no upset bid.
She's already paid the balance, I mean, she's already paid the required deposit. She wants to know if, if all, once all is said and done, then she has to pay. The total, like, one day after the ten days were up, if there were no upset bids, and we didn't see where it was exactly stated.
I thought the general statute, they, they said that it was, uh, upon acceptance. It was, uh, it was required for those funds to be paid, there's, there's no, after the day. You know, we could probably give her five days, but certainly, uh, the balance of those funds is, would be requested, would be required by that.
And I tried to see that as far as the general statutes were, and I agree with Commissioner Jordan, what I, what I think I interpret there is that once that is accepted, the payment is, but I think we can grant up to twenty days. I think it relies on two that. Madam Chairman, I would, um, I would remind the board that if the general statute does not indicate, um, the, the timeframe, whatever we do, this is a small number, whatever we do will be set in precedence for future, so we need to certainly take that into consideration.
I'll, I'll say, we do have a attorney standing in front of them to ask questions.
I, I thought I saw it.
To make sure that they're doing it correctly.
What is that, just kept, the general statute, what?
The one oh-five-three-seventy-six, I mean, a lot, some discretion is allocated to what the government based on probably timeframe. You know, once that bid is awarded, it, I didn't find any language either to really specify five or ten or fifteen days. I don't see that in the reading of it, in other words.
I don't see anything that says six months, either, that's right.
No, sir, that's correct, yes.
Well, based on the fact that you've got a, a chance at a ten-day upset, once we award the property, I think it's only reasonable to have those funds in, because if, if someone comes in in ten days and, and, uh, goes higher, we can refund that money back. But, but guess what, if, you know, the ten days go, and we have received money that person, we have nothing concrete after that ten days to say that, uh, you know, we're gonna get our money. We're only based on the fact that they paid the deposit of, of five percent, which is sixty-six dollars. I think within that, uh, ten-day period, within five days, they'll have that, those funds there. And, uh, you know, if someone upsets it, we'll give, we'll give the money back. But if they don't, you know, we, we haven't lost that ton. If this property is sold, it's way below our market value, we're not selling property that's, uh, you know, that, at a market cost.
County Manager, um, did you say that, um, the person had inquired, had questioned you on, on the matter? Well, we could certainly, uh, today, I mean, that's just a question that we can respond to. And we could award the bid today without making a determination on that, and let our attorney research that for us, that makes sense. Gentlemen, I'm posing that as a discussion.
I would think that we need to make sure that what we do, if we have to be consistent, and as you say, this is a relatively small line line, but it could be a pe, a piece of property right on that we would, and we would have to treat each one the same way. I would think that we would need to have the advice of our attorney. And it might be that, for, I think, ten days, she needs to have the money here, uh, you know, the next day, I'm not sure. But, um, let's, I mean, ask our attorney, and she can, you can, we have a second meeting this month. So this goes, I, we accept this bid today, um, on the, um, third. We have a non-meeting on the fifteenth, that's, of course, I don't know if you can, if the Saturdays and Sundays in here. But, um, certainly...
Issue is, we don't know if we're, if we're gonna be making the decision, or we're gonna find a decision.
Made for us.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's...
The property was advertised as a sealed bid, not an upset bid.
Very good.
The, the property was advertised as a sealed bid process, not an upset bid process.
I think it was, was the award, the seal had to wait ten, the seal had to wait for it.
Not, not unless it's an upset bid, we didn't advertise for an upset bid, if I have that correct.
Well, I, I've, I've read those, that's just a general statute, I can't put my hands on it right now. But I understand, whenever you have a court purchase, sales, that you have a ten-day upset period, I, I read that somewhere in here, maybe not. But, um, you know, let's say you do have a ten-day upset, someone comes in and says, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna bid, uh, a hundred dollars more. And guess what, that falls through. They don't, you know, they, they, they make that claim, they don't do it, we're still, that property that, uh, that we have sold, and we could have, we could collect the costs.
Well, as does say in this, a night of the sale of county property. That the board commissioners will determine highest responsible bid for the property, and award the bid at its regular meeting on May third. The, bids will remain open and subject to acceptance until the board commissioners awards the bid, and we can award it today. And if we accept that bid, we already have that five percent, um...
Actually, in the, the third paragraph at the bottom, I believe addresses what we have to do. That last sentence is, the bids will remain open and subject to acceptance until...
The board commissioners awards the bid, and we award the bid, then she needs to pay up.
Well, if we award bid, there, Commissioner Jordan, I don't believe there can be a ten percent upset, the way that is raised.
That, that's...
Because it closes the, the acceptance. Now, I, I agree, right here, yeah, now, I agree in the future, we might want to change that to allow for a ten-day upset.
Uh, this is, this is the memo, the general statute itself, is what I was thinking about.
Yeah, but if this, if this is the advertising...
This is how it's advertised, and it's based upon the...
The, the, the party made their, made their offer, thinking that it would be open for sealed bids one time, no upset.
And, you know, when you have sealed bids, you can do it either way, you can have it as awarded right then, or you can have the upset process. This is advertised as a sealed bid and being awarded. So I think we all, pretty firm grain to say, we award that today, and we expect the money.
I, I, that's, I think that's entirely reasonable, uh, appropriate.
Madam Chairman, I, I would, uh, I would like to, uh, at our next, at one of our next meetings coming up, I'd like to request that our attorney meet with us, conversation, to discuss, um, possibility of future sealed bids, having a upset, um...
We, we can do that, it's just a separate resolution, there's two different resolutions, and at the time that you, back two months ago when you discussed it, you just decided to go with the sealed bid instead of the upset bid.
Oh, he's probably got a small amount of money.
Right.
And it's just prolonging it, and people, obviously, because you have to re-advertise and everything, and it's...
Right, yeah, those factors change, but I would like to see our, our attorney meet with us, and, and, and also, if we could have him look into this before he meets with us, so that he can have the answer, and you don't have to go to another, a meeting, that would be, do we, can we make that decision to do it one way, this time, and a different way next time, or do we need to be consistent?
We can do it either way.
Can you think of any?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I think there are options.
Madam Chairman, you're partially out.
Do I have a motion to accept this bid? Ms. Jordan?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid that's been presented through board commissioners, uh, with the collection of the, the main funds uh, within the next three, as it say, ten, ten years.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made, second to accept this bid for the Riddick property. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so you'll notify the bidder, that, that bill has been settled. Okay, historic core price proposal, we have a letter from Clear Skates, uh, in your packet. Would you like to comment on it?
In summary, the recommendation now is to, instead of using bricks, well, let me back up in front of that. At the last meeting, the commissioners agreed to move forward with renovation using yard-aged bricks and to replace, um, not to reconstruct the entire room, but to replace the bricks that were in this repair and move forward.
I think the last one was new brick, but I know you hope it's...
Well, it's, it's, they're called yard-aged bricks still, is what, is the way they refer to them, even when I talked to them last time. And they had discussed moving forward with that. This message from Clear Skates is now recommending something different, a different approach. It says that last time they would want to replace a lot of the doors and the windows, but now they feel like they can salvage the doors and windows and reuse those. The walls will be provided with new footing, and that concrete masonry units would be used instead of bricks. And their recommendation is this, because they feel like it's, um, more economically feasible, as well as the building will be stuck it over, you will not know if there are cement blocks under there or dirt bricks. So they need to know if we are willing to move forward with that approach. I did speak with James Andreas, because in the email, um, it was indicated to me that in his construction was not willing to move forward until they heard that we had funded this project, so I called James Andreas, and I spoke with him, and he said, he knows we do have the money, that we are funding the project, and that, based on their conversation, this was the recommendation, so that he could go ahead and begin work with the mason brick, masonry blocks or cement blocks instead of bricks.
Right, and, and they're gonna generate a contract.
Correct.
And we will still have to approve that by the end where it's started.
Correct.
Their contract also specifies by cost plus.
Correct. Just like they have in the past. But before he began all of that, he wanted confirmation that this was the route that was wanted instead of the bricks.
Okay, the deal with this is that they are asking to proceed by using the cement block... The deal with this is that they are asking to proceed by using the cement blocks instead of the yard-aged or new bricks, and, and just again, that we approved that.
It's gonna be covered all in stock.
Yeah, it's gonna be covered with stuff up.
I think this is something we suggested about a year ago.
Thank you, Billy.
Yeah. I think we did too.
I think we're looking, that we generate whatever, the letter of amendment to let them get started on construction with using cement blocks instead of...
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made, it's second. Any additional comments?
Just clarification, it's, it's, approval is gonna be for them to move forward, because the body has written the...
With a contract?
Contract, right.
Okay, the motion in front of us is to move forward with the historic courthouse on West Wing, using cement blocks and stuff over in the construction, or reconstruction, uh, and to move forward to get a contract, with them to write up a contract for us. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and county manager will prepare that. The second item in this is a, the historic courthouse, the historical society has proposed, uh, something for the board commissioners to consider. If you have noticed, at historic courthouse on East Wing, James Uier has been over there redoing the windows in the part that is under the control of the historic society. Uh, their offer is to repair all of wood windows in the courthouse. They would, with proper glazing, and he would, um, replace wood that is rotten in the windows and the paints that have been falling out, and that historical society would pay for all of the windows, the wood windows in the courthouse, historic courthouse to be redone.
You said all of them?
All of the wooden.
All the wooden?
The WPA wing of the courthouse, it's metal windows. But it'd be the courtroom, those across the front, East Wing, but, West Wing, yeah, the West Wing are good.
And Sopler from Creve's conversation, understand, um, that James Uier came up with a recommendation?
Yes. And I'm hoping, after this meeting, we might walk over and see his work. Uh, he is in the Gatlin Room, has already done a couple windows. Uh, he has extensive, um, work experience in the Philadelphia and Richmond area in historical, of working with wood windows, I might, this is whatever you want to call it. Any more recommendations?
My, my only, uh, question was, and I think we talked about this, uh, Madam Chairman, is fact that what we're doing now, uh, from a logistics standpoint, would it affect what's gonna happen later on, is rework, so to speak, if I had to take it back out, or some of the work that they're doing?
And I guess we could ask James Andreas that, if the, the only ones would be, effect would be, is ones on the West Wing side and the upper courtroom, that windows, if it would be, uh, for, which way it would be better to do them, nine, or to wait until after the reconstruction's been done. And that would be, based, the offer by the historic courthouse is, I mean, historical society is the same. Um, of course, we have him here, not on site.
I was thinking, one of the wooden, you know, the chair, uh, give across the roof, you know, across the board, you know, to come back, uh, for, for Clear Skates, who bears, uh, things, it's great.
Madam Dast.
Um, do I have a motion?
I move that we accept their, uh, offer to, um, proceed. I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, motion's been made, second to accept his, uh, historical society's proposal, uh, to, uh, cover the cost of the work on the wood windows in historic courthouse. Uh, any additional?
I have, have been over there taking a look, and, uh, Mr. Uier said he did a good job, obviously, that was...
On this, I'm not sure, but I guess I need to recuse myself, since I'm the president of the historical society. Um, uh, so, I wanna recuse myself if that...
Sure.
Did we have to have a motion for that? Okay. To holla, like, Jackie, take over.
Yeah, okay. Um, do we have to have a motion for her to recuse herself?
I think we do. I, I think she needs to recuse.
I think we...
You agree, don't you? Okay. As a vice chair of the board, uh, today, I would, uh, ask that we, uh, address Chairman Hapler's request to, uh, recuse herself on this vote. Do we have a motion? That she need, that she need to recuse?
I don't think, I don't see why I'm number after the cues, except anyway, there's three of them, there's five in the number, but the historical society, is all in the queue, or something.
Um, it was brought up by the chair, as vice chair, I'm doing what chair asked me to do.
I don't want to make a, any more...
It's only appropriate.
I was, I was chair of the, chair of the board of commissioners and president of the historical society, I'm, I'm, conflict.
Mr. Joe, did you have anything to offer on the vote there?
No, I'm just looking at the rules for accusing, but I just, I don't see a beer. If I don't know what it is.
We have our evidence training on the twenty-four, uh, group training.
Yeah, I need to go ahead with the vote. I have a question.
Okay, all right. Calling the vote. This is on the, uh, accepting proposal of the historical society and not the recuse, okay? Okay, uh, the motion for us is to accept the proposal presented by the historical society to take care of, uh, the windows at the courthouse. Been discussed, uh, all in favor, but no, say no.
All right.
Any opposed? In that...
Okay, we finished up all business. Getting ready to go into budget amendments for the new business. Uh, Ms. Hall?
I'm the budget officer.
Oh, you're the budget, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm the executive service county manager, county manager officer.
I'm sorry. So I... You are somebody who has, I can't picture which hat you wear.
For you, you have your budget notebooks, and I do apologize for the delay. We had some last minute insurance questions and a few other issues that caused the delay, so it was not ready until yesterday. And the budget is balanced and complosed with joint statute one fifty-nine dash one eleven. A copy of the budget has been filed with the clerk of the board of commissioners, is available for public inspection. Copies will be available to the news media in Gates County, as well as the county website and with the county library following today's meeting. Not earlier than ten days after the presentation of the budget message, and no later than July first, two thousand seventeen, the board of commissioners must adopt a budget ordinance making appropriations, estimated revenues, and living taxes for the budget year. A public hearing is scheduled for Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand seven, at seven P M. on the fiscal year eighteen budget. Key highlights: Budget is balanced in accordance with North Carolina legal standards. This year, we underwent a property reevaluation. The revenue neutral rate for property tax is seventy-five cent per one hundred dollars in assessed value. The property tax to balance the fiscal year eighteen recommended budget is seventy-six cent per one hundred dollars in assessed value, with a ninety-eight percent collection rate estimated for property and motor vehicle taxes. Total budget is fifteen million, five hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars, of which eleven million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four is the general fund. Health insurance rates decreased by ten percent by switching to segment, and this resulted in the deductible for employees being lowered from five thousand dollars to two thousand five hundred dollars. Beginning with the two thousand sixteen employee evaluations, Gates County employees were eligible for merit raises. I am recommending that merit raises for all employees that were eligible and that were recommended by department heads receive the, receive the merit raises, and this has been included in the departmental budget as presented. Included in the budget is one new part-time and one new full-time telecommunications position, and this was discussed this morning at the personnel board meeting as well, and personnel board did recommend that these positions be filled. I'm recommending a one percent quota to all Gates County employees, including the local officials and the county manager. This will total with benefits thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and can be taken from the governing body miscellaneous line item, as well as the water fund for the water department employees. For fiscal year eighteen, more capital county projects are being recommended for funding. New software for finance, customer service, tax and inspections, as well as hardware that is needed, is included as, in the budget. The inbound budget is three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. This is a one-time expense with the yearly maintenance agreement. Many departments and agencies did receive full funding. To balance the solid waste budget, I have recommended an increase in the monthly fee from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars a month. There's an estimated forty-five hundred landfill accounts. A seventy-five percent collection rate will, will result in the budget being balanced. Article forty-four tax must be used for public schools, community colleges, or economic development. For the fiscal year eighteen budget, using fifteen, fiscal year seventeen estimates, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars is being budgeted as follows for Gates County public schools. An additional one hundred thousand dollars for the public schools capital outlay, so that will have a total of three hundred thousand dollars for public schools capital outlay. And the remainder of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to be put into the school capital reserve fund for future debt incurred on the central middle school project. Gates County public schools funding remains the same at two million, seven hundred and nine thousand. The combination line item within the planned examining budget was not funded, and if the county wishes to pursue, pursue demolition of a building during fiscal year eighteen, money will need to be allocated. And I'd like to thank all of the department heads, as well as our finance officer, for working with this, and Ms. Lawrence, and Christie Byron as well.
There's a lot to process, a lot to, um...
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we receive, the budget, as presented, not approved, but received.
Yeah. Okay, motion's on, and in front of us to approve the budget as received.
Proceed.
They said, to, uh, yeah, approve the receiving of the budget, uh, for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Do I have a second?
That's easy to second, I'll second that.
Yeah, that, a motion's been made, a second in, in the discussion, to about receiving.
Or recuse.
Here it comes. All those in favor of the, uh, the, before us, the proposal to receive county budget for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, this is one of the draws of being a commissioner.
And I will also know that you also have before you the funds as being scheduled that is recommended, the highlights that are in yellow, or the recommended changes.
Thank you. Um, we have some, some work to do between I and the, uh, what is it, the next check straight thing. So it's a big time reading.
Okay, now you have, I've got ahead of myself, I sit right with the budget, I went through budget amendments, uh, so, uh, Ms. Hall?
Okay, we have several budget amendments. In the first few, um, budget amendment thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four are all for EMS, um, various grants, and the amendments are to add line items to the budget for these. And, um, individually, it is listed as the sixteen generator, ASMAT exercise, SARX seventeen, fifteen generator, H M E P. And to move funds for the H M E P, because we actually have already received the funds, and expense those funds, and to move them to the appropriate line.
Okay, this is about, uh, kind of cleaning up the budget.
No, ma'am, some of these are new grants that...
New grants, I know, I see one's received. The one room, the sixteen generator is a new grant, correct?
Many of these are.
Okay, can we take them all at one time?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, you have already looked through and looked at these, are coming, um, do I have a motion to approve amendments thirty-eight through forty-four, I believe?
So move, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Right.
Motion's been made, a second to approve the amendments to the emergency management amendments from thirty-eight through forty-four. In the discussion, here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, budget amendment number forty-five is also to, um, add a line item for a new soil and water conservation greens, an amount of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
And, ma'am, this is for Hurricane Matthew cleanup of several waterways within the county.
Okay, like this, three.
I've got the paperwork in my office, I forget which one, there's four of them listed.
Okay, you've heard that this is a new grant to help clean up after Hurricane Matthew. What is the nature of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the budget, number forty-five. Second.
Okay, motion's been made, a second, in the discussion, here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Hendricks has one, this is kind of to clean up, uh, the budget for the end of the year.
Yes.
Which is very smart, to go ahead and get it spent, so that we may save some money on the next year.
Yes, that's budget amendment number forty-six.
Okay, this is, go ahead, reality.
If I may, all of the rest of them are to reallocate funds from within departments or across departments that cover salary increases that were allocated, or to cover payouts that were unexpected. So if you'd like to take them all as one, you do have that option.
I have a question on, um, forty-seven.
Okay, so, let's do, go ahead with forty-six, and then we'll do them like this. Do I have a motion to, for the, um, customer service amendment?
So move, Madam Chair. Second.
The motion's been made, a second, in discussion, here none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, amendment number forty, forty-seven?
Uh, I'd, what was that, two, seven, four?
She was owed vacation time.
It was nine thousand?
It was over nine thousand dollars, sir.
How, how did you get nine thousand dollars?
Because you, you're not, you have to pay out, so she had to pay out for that, and she also had to receive her last check, so, and I don't have the figures with you, but Christie does have them. And between her payout of her vacation that was required, and she had comp time, if I'm not, if I remember correctly, from where, before she could earn comp time, and then the policy changed where she could not earn comp time, she would also do that payout as well.
Yeah, I, this, this thing like, uh, a large amount.
It was a very large amount.
Well, I think, you know, we, we as commissioners, I feel like I'd, I'd like to see what, you know, the details on it, what it was for.
What do you mean, what it was for? It was a requirement that she had to be paid.
Well, how much vacation time did that?
I don't remember how much she had to be, but it was, I'm pretty sure the maximum was, amount was two forty.
I, that's all in a year, but, but it's hours.
Right, you get two forty, two hundred and forty hours a year, and for pay rate, which, uh, can attempt to fine, that's why it was such a large payout. Believe me, we have run the numbers, and this is the correct amount.
If I'm a caller, I don't think we get a payout for the sheriff, but...
The sheriff's payout was a substantial amount also, however, and money was taken from part-time salaries to cover that.
The sheriff's payout was a substantial amount also, however, and money was taken from part-time salaries to cover that.
I started saying, and I, it's just that, in the state system for teachers, you know, um, you get, could get paid like thirty days, oh, work days, but, um, if you had, and holidays, for every twenty you had, you got an only month of experience. So it does come, it adds up.
This employee's been gone for several months, did it take a reason? I mean, I'm surprised to see it, thinking that we owed somebody that amount of money.
No, we, she spent, she had to be paid out as soon as she left, we're just now cleaning up the budget.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's not something, it's not...
She's already been paid.
Okay, thank you. Got you.
Okay.
Uh, uh...
You might see some justification.
I, I would like to see some justification, I, when I say that, I mean, I'd just like to see it, the, the itemized, uh, list of what the item was. And so that, um, you know, we certainly have the, um, satisfaction knowing that we understand what we, what we approved. I have no idea what we approved here.
Okay, can we table this until our night meeting?
I've already requested information that you brought over, so this can be...
Okay, well, we'll maybe do it at the end, we'll table it at this particular time so that we can move on.
But in fact, what we're doing is we're just, we're taking, we're, we are talking about, um, the money's already been paid. I mean, we're, we're just talking about paperwork, but I understand you've never walked to one of those, nothing like that.
Okay, let's move on with amendment number forty-eight. Capital line, it's off.
For the annuals, um, to reallocate funds, again, we're cleaning up, just cleaning up the budget, um, this accommodates for working holidays and a special rate. So we had to move some funds between salaries like retirement and professional services and UI expense.
What is UI?
Unemployment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chairman, second.
Motion's been made and seconded in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Lauren.
Budget amendment forty-nine, um, the same concept to clean up, this is from grounds of maintenance and it's for, um, to accommodate a pay increase for D. Riddick in January two thousand seventeen, and we're just moving between salaries like retirement and contract services, travel, telephone, postage, insurance, and government body miscellaneous.
Okay, so...
Was that a ten thousand dollar yearly?
Well, it appears like it was...
No, it was also to, not just for his, but it also was to, there was someone at the beginning of the year who was moved from part-time to full-time and it was also to cover that salary. Salary was moved from, um, the part-time line and then there was, this money's also to cover that position as well.
It's more than, yeah, just, you ready for it?
Right, it was actually for, for two of them.
Okay, for two of them.
Raise seems to be fairly significant.
It was for two of them.
Yeah, I kind of thought, I didn't think we did, did that much of a raise.
No, uh, it's a twenty, thirty percent increase in salary by law.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Mm-hmm. I know, motion to approve amendment number forty-nine.
Yes ma'am, that's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made a seconded and this is to reallocate funds to public salaries and benefits for two people in the, um, building and grounds department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, budget amendment fifty, again, to reallocate funds for shortage to pay increase for H. West.
Weiss.
Weiss, that was not included in the budget. And it's between salaries like retirement, um, government body miscellaneous, and unemployment expense.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move, we approve budget provision number...
Okay, a motion's been made to approve a budget fifty, in discussion, I mean, no, in a second.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
A motion's been made a second in discussion.
Yes ma'am, um, not opposed to what I'm looking at, but just, uh, like as the county manager, um, this is, um, he got new credentials.
No, his job was incorrectly classified.
Has this one changed?
And this was approved back in August for his reclassification.
Good, remember that. Satisfied?
Okay, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do you have anything, I'd like the, um, can I, yeah?
No ma'am, she might be at lunch.
Okay, um, we'll move on, the next one is for the...
Excuse me, one more, but there's one extra desk as well.
Okay, a budget amendment. Um, register of deeds, and it's also to correct, um...
Only had two different papers.
No, register of deeds and... Okay, no, this won't be up next, if they don't have it.
Which ones are nineteen?
The one for register of deeds, they did not have a copy of it.
Is it consensually?
I would have sent, I would have sent email out credit.
I mean, I read it on the email.
For us to reallocate funds from within her department so that she could go ahead and repair another book.
But, uh, I was gonna flag that she had an over in her, in her line item, and then when I got my case, I saw it.
No, sir, that, that's all been, your, your report, remember that you get printed as a month behind, that's already been taken care of in Congress, yes. So there's not an over, so she's already corrected everything.
What is this for?
That is for to repair the book so that she can move monies within her line items to reallocate it to the book repaired line item.
All right, I'll make a motion that, uh, we accept. Uh, budget amendment fifty-one, or register of deeds, and I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made a second to, um, uh, for the, uh, re-allocation funds in the court, I mean, the register of deeds office. Um, any discussion? I mentioned once we repair books, and those books are costly to repair, but you know, we are required to, by statute, to keep those books and keep them so that the public can have access to them. And so on, back to seventy, seventy-nine, you know?
Not just for today, but forever.
Yeah, forever, so we have to keep them up. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so that's amendment fifty-one, I'll say.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the one that is, uh, ending, did you want me to go get information, Natalie, or?
That's what I had said to Christie to...
Okay.
Ask her to get it, I said she's probably at lunch.
What is lunch? What do you think?
They're having lunch.
Okay, um, I believe next is a voluntary ag district ordinance request for attorney review.
Yes, but the voluntary ag district committee cannot move forward with anything until their proposed bylaws and documents are reviewed by an attorney, or if they do not have any money since they were, since, I believe it was May of last year, the commissioners approved, the committee informed, and there has been a request for the county attorney to review and for the commissioners to fund this.
I don't see it on the thing, but I, I remember reading it. Okay, you have heard about the ag, um, voluntary, the voluntary ag district, that you guys have shot around the county, counties, just signs up, designating areas as voluntary ag districts, um, this is to request that attorneys review, which, since they don't have attorney, to give down the county attorney. What is the pleasure for?
It works really well, I've had it.
It is mine, you're packet, this was a verbal request that was given to me at a meeting.
Uh, what, uh, the, the email?
Uh, yes, an email as well.
Speak that again, ma'am.
It's for the voluntary ag district, before their bylaws or anything else can be approved or incorporated, they have to be reviewed by an attorney. And because the committee was formed last May with the commissioners' consent, they have requested that the commissioners pay for the attorney to review all the documentation that they have created so far before they move forward and do anything else.
Why, are you going to use an attorney?
They have requested to use our attorney.
Should we, um, should, we have no idea that we, our attorney's going to need to use on it.
Well, the bylaws pretty, pretty standard.
And they use, they did use, I believe it was Chawan's temp, as a template.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we, uh, we created that and voted to create that district and a lot of the volunteer time from our local farmers were put into that, so I would make a motion that, uh, we approve use of our attorney to draft their bylaws.
What, to re, to review?
To review and make recommendations about those bylaws.
Okay, a motion's been made, a motion's been made a second that we approve the use of our attorney to review the bylaws of the voluntary ag district committee at all, at all extents. Okay, any additional comments?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I would like to make one comment, uh, commissioner, was, it, it, would we want, also in that motion, include that we appointed those individuals to that community?
Acknowledge, just acknowledge that, sort of, historical.
Just so it's in there, that they're our folks that have requested that.
I would make that part of my motion, uh, to concur with, uh, Commissioner Freeman.
And also, in order to make sure we're legal, um, the funds could be allocated from the governing body and if they are not sufficient, we take out, fund out. Because we're approving something every day, you think, it wasn't like, it wasn't like that.
Of course, we had the attorney on a retainer.
That is not her for any of his hours.
Okay, got you. Okay, so...
The governing body, oven field, and it exceeds what's left, because we just spent twenty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars out of it, of these amendments. And plus, we gave a billion two pounds, so we probably got about six or seven left.
There's three thousand, six hundred nine.
Three thousand, six, maybe our attorney would do it for a long time.
Don't let that Tony, the attorney, know that much.
Yeah, but don't tell, don't tell Pitt how much you got.
I'm not looking too big.
Madam Chairman, I would, uh, I would like to, there's not too much trouble, but, you know, like there, uh, I would like to make those comments, um, made by Commissioner Freeman and Commissioner Jordan, part of my motion. And that'd be the motion in full.
Okay, so that we, the motion before us is the approve the use of our attorney to review bylaws of the voluntary ag district committee, uh, which funds, which we appointed, um, which we appointed and the members, and that funds will come from the circle, uh, we, the funds from miscellaneous and also governing body. Is that the motion?
With the, with any balance to come from the judge.
Okay, okay, I know Melissa got that, um, uh, any other further discussion?
I hope not.
I hope I don't have to repeat it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Okay, uh, this is, May is Over American Month in Gates County, and as we've heard from our speakers today, we have a lot of people who would be classified in that category, I don't know anybody personally, but, uh, but we, uh, have that and I'll ask our vice chair if he'll read the proclamation and they would ask us to, um, approve.
Older Americans Month, two thousand seventeen, a proclamation. Whereas Gates County includes older Americans who richly contribute to our community, and whereas we acknowledge that what it means to age has changed for the better, whereas Gates County is committed to supporting older adults as they take charge of their health, explore new opportunities and activities, and focus on independence, and whereas Gates County can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by involving older adults in the redefinition of aging in our community, promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, encouraging older adults to speak up for themselves and others, and providing opportunities for older adults to share their experiences. Now, therefore, we of Gates County do hereby proclaim May two thousand seventeen to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as influential and vital parts of our community, dated this third day of May two thousand seventeen, signed by our chairman and clerk.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Motion's been made?
Second, Madam Chairman.
Okay, motion's been made, part of the session, any other part of the session? Certainly, we deserve a month, quite deserve a whole year, but anyway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now we come to the Department of Planning Board and Board of Adjustments. Um, I don't know if, in a particular order, we want, let's do the planning board. Um, first, um, as you can see, we have three slots. Uh, we have, those are already in our packet, and we have additionally, we have three more and, um, our, well, two, two more and all these are not planning, but... I don't know, I don't even see which ones, but I know Nathaniel Thomas was planning. I'm not sure if I, oh, she, I think, who does, uh, I'll, I don't know if I can, uh, this one's open, okay.
The other two is, uh, reapportments, I believe.
Yeah, but, no, she's reappearing the ones that registered.
Oh, I didn't see any of the others.
They're, they're, like, you picked yours up, I'm sorry, I forgot, they came in, she, she picked hers up the day that, and these came in.
I didn't have my name in there.
Okay, so I'm, you know, sometimes I, do you mind? Well, I had to go sign something. Okay, what is the, two are really reapportments.
Are we, are we looking at the planning board?
Planning board. And then we have a slot open as well, so there's really three appointments to the planning board, um...
Madam Chair, I got everybody out.
If I could make a motion, Madam Chairman, for those that, uh, were reapplying, uh, Mr. Silin, William Franklin Silin, and Sherwood Easton, Charles Sherwood Easton.
Okay, that is your motion for reapportment of those two? Okay, motion's been made a second to reappoint Sherwood Easton and Billy Silin, or William Franklin Silin, um, to the planning board, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now you have three who are for the, uh, slot that, um, that is open because of reservation. Uh, what is... Uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I would nominate Mr. Thomas, Nathaniel Thomas, for that position.
He's a pastor at New Brook Branches.
That's right.
Okay, a motion's been made, you do Nathaniel Thomas.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chairman.
That motion's been made and seconded, uh, to Nathaniel Thomas. In discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does that fill all those vacancies?
That fills all those vacancies. Okay, now going on to the Board of Adjustments.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I'm a little bit late, I just want to make a comment here. Um, to, to the boards, and, and, I guess this, this will be in the minutes. Um, we don't appoint, I don't believe we appoint who the chair is, the bylaw chair is. They do that on their own. But I just want to extend to them, um, you know, just a general comment, that they would look among themselves and, um, and give opportunity to other members of these, of these boards to share the leadership role as chairman or whatever, from time to time if they choose to move it, to move that. Um, and just a, a comment, everybody's doing a fantastic job. Uh, and I even reached out to, uh, to one of the parties here and mentioned that, that when they do select their new board, to take that into consideration. Uh, so being I made that to an individual, I meant to make it before we did the other vote, but did not, but I want to be on record that I shared that with the-
Well, I think there will be a new chair for the planning board, because I believe there's only a active chair now, because the chair is the one that presumes.
I think that is for an interim chair and an interim vice chair until it be.
And, and the one that I did contact was on the, um, Board of Judgments.
Okay. Okay, uh, we come to the Board of Adjustments. Um, we have four people, um, and we have-
Two positions.
Two positions.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we establish these two people, doing the foster parish to the Board of Adjustment, and also make a change in that to promote Carol Ward to a sitting member and Foster Parish to a alternate member.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to reappoint Joe Green Junior and Foster Parish to the Board of Adjustments. And in addition, to put Foster Parish as the alternate and Carol Ward as the sitting member.
No, that would be considered an alternate.
Alternate.
Yeah, also saying, may I make the recommendation that this be done in two different motions?
Okay.
For clarification.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that for the Carol Green part.
Okay, the motion in front of us then is to appoint Joe Green Junior and Foster Parish.
No, I would recommend doing as two totally separate, Mr. Green as one and the second seen as another. For clarification.
All right, okay. Let's start over.
Rewind and take it.
Just I'm gonna take more.
I'll make a motion that we report, re, reappoint Joe Green to a position on the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
In discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make the next motion that we appoint Carol Ward Junior to a sitting, the sitting member on the Board of Justice.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made to appoint Carol Ward as a sitting member to the Board of Adjustments. In a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, third motion.
I'll make the third motion to reappoint Foster Parish to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll keep it, I'll say, I'll say. Take your choice.
Okay, in discussion, hearing none, then we will, all those in favor of appoint Foster Parish as the alternate to the Board of Adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, so we have that done. Okay. Okay, now we come to one, uh, the discussion of the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Brandy, Brandy Jordan has emailed us. Okay, concerning a member of that committee, Gates County, uh, commu, uh, advisory board, uh, that one person has not, um, done the required hours of classroom training, has not attended, has not attended the training, and has not attended meetings. Uh, and that's something that we need to make sure the people who are on these boards are taking active role and getting the necessary training.
Madam Chairman, I have talked with the chair of the Community Advisory Committee, and they informed me that Mr. Hicks was in the Coast Guard or something to do with his informant that prevented him from attending some of those trainings and some of the appointments that were set up for him. But he is an interested member, uh, he offers needed diversity on the committee, and he's willing to serve, his, his status has changed somewhat now, and that he would like to be, uh, to remain on the CAC and participate in it. And I would recommend that we send a letter, a response to, to Mr. Jordan that the chair of the CAC has discussed with Mr. Hicks and these issues. And he's certainly, uh, willing to try to, uh, complete whatever necessary training he had, and that she would contact the chair and see if they can work something out where Mr. Hicks can remain on the CAC because he's certain he wants to serve. And all the, uh, diversity board committee that is so much needed.
Hey, would you think, would you, would you be agreeable that we, a lot of be sent to the Board of Commissioners to him expressing that he needs to make sure that he does this in a timely fashion, that he gets his training and attends the meetings? Um, and if he cannot fulfill his obligations?
Well, I'm not opposed to the force in him, a letter. Uh, of course, we, we, I'm talking secondhand when the chair of the CAC contacted me. Uh, certainly, you know, we wanted to get a commitment from him firsthand.
I just feel, go ahead.
I'm not opposed to that, but I think that rather than taking a step to take him off the committee at this time when he had legitimate reasons, it was not that he was just a delegate. It was that the timing was not appropriate for him when he had an obligation. And he had the, and, uh, he was not able to do what he was asked to.
That's why I want a kind of a commitment from him, that he's willing to fulfill his obligations.
From this point forward.
Yeah, from this point forward, and in a timely fashion, because his, uh, what was it? Eight hours of classroom training, um, you know, variety of things that he has to do. Because it is, I mean, there are requirements from state that these people have to do these things. And we need to make sure our community is in compliance. That's just me.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to sending him a letter to make sure that-
He understands that this has to be done, this day and member in this standing.
Is this something that will last one other year, never, never shows up the next year? Or last one year, if he doesn't?
Just training and more.
Can they, can they see the rule? I guess can, cannot, but we have to, by the way, we have. I mean, what I'm getting, it's something that we're gonna revisit in three months or maybe twelve months.
His term expires on September thirty, two thousand eighteen.
So if he doesn't, do something between that and September.
Eighteen.
Oh, eighteen.
September eighteen, you need to, we might need to revisit this.
It's the doggy year, I have.
Well, I would hope that he could get necessary training within twelve months.
Well, it's, uh, it didn't have a date on it, but it says, there's a document, I see the word final rule there in capitalized, and basically what I determined from it, Brandy Jordan has got to put her initials on the document that says, everybody, I'm attesting to everybody, has received proper training. And, uh, where it says final rule there. And, uh, and what I think what she's trying to do is to try to get ahead of, uh, she want to check note on that, on that final rule, because that would probably rule him out from, from serving. So we're, we might be thinking about two thousand and eighteen, but the final rule paperwork might have to be filled out on June, June, uh, July one. She didn't say, did she?
No, but she has to fill out a report, and she cannot check off that block that all of them have been trained.
So that when the final rule is passed, that sounds like, to me, that's a document she has to submit maybe once a year or something, and if it's July one, he's got to hustle to get that time in. I mean, I'm in favor of giving a second chance, I'm just saying.
Well, if you, if she gets someone new, she's still, they're gonna have to get trained. So we need to get trained between now and the time she has to sign this document.
But, but if she got somebody new, they would probably exempt it because they wouldn't have had time to take the classroom training.
This is commitment.
And I don't know if that would be a case, I'm just-
I would think a new person would have so many months to get the training. And, but this person is already ahead in time.
I'm not in favor to do what you're proposing. I just want to make sure that it's not this phrase, final rule.
Well, the final rule has not been passed by the government, but in fact, when we had that meeting, what was it, last January, I believe, when we were met here with him and the others, they were still working on that. The final rule could be passed tomorrow, the final rule could be passed in two years.
Because it's not a, it's not a-
No, no.
End of the game, basically.
Right.
Well, it's trying, yeah, have my bullets in the water. Okay.
Well, we just said our change was pointed out.
And asking, you know, telling him that it's-
Can I ask your friend to have a question?
I'm, I'm just- Has his commitment with the Coast Guard changed?
Right, my understanding, uh, I made notes here, that his, his status has changed now, and that he's, uh, able to serve more regularly than he had in the past.
Well, I think we need to make a ask, that it, will he be able to make this commitment of training and attending meetings in our budget? Okay, entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that, uh, we send a letter to Mr. Hicks, uh, with a copy to Ms. Jordan, uh, stating that the board understands that he has not been able to attend to training previously due to his work status, but it is necessary that he receive the, the training, the necessary training in order to understand the board, and-
Will he be able to make that commitment?
Will he be able to make that commitment?
Within the year.
Within, within, within the next six months or, or months, whatever.
Should, should that all through your motion, give the time and-
Well, within six months.
Or, or I see here that training dates were July and March. Wonder if we should give him the, through July, the first?
Well, they get, it's probably gonna come up in July again.
That's twenty sixteen, the sixth.
Those are the dates.
Last year.
But you would think it might be somewhat repetitive. Uh, of course, they have it in August as well. But I, I think, uh, if we say six months, we're talking by November.
Well, that puts, we could just say about the end of twenty seventeen.
End of twenty seventeen.
I mean, that's kind of clean.
I think that's, that's reasonable.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion is before us, uh, to send a letter to Mr. Hicks and a copy to Ms. Jordan, uh, trying to clarify Mr. Hicks's status, whether he can, if he could get, willing to make a commitment and time and training, to make sure he is accredited member of this committee. And we'll give a timeline, it's by the end of the year. Okay, in a discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
I think I did a motion regarding the payout. There's a payout for vacation, of two hundred ninety-four point eighteen vacation hours.
Two hundred ninety-four vacation.
And two hundred thirty-nine point two five comp hours.
Two hundred, how many do I have?
Two hundred thirty-nine point two five. And that totaled by itself seventeen thousand eighty dollars and forty-three cents. Plus she received a prorated salary for December, and then because of additional duties that were taken on by two of the people within finance, they did receive a small increment as I was allowed to do within personnel ordinance that was in effect until the end of February.
But I have talked to the Coast Guard as well.
Nine thousand five hundred and fifty requested is enough to cover everything.
That usually seventeen?
Total before her monthly payout, I mean, before her salary, was seventeen thousand eighty dollars forty-three cents.
How about we go and carry over two hundred forty hours per year?
Well, that's how many you can carry over per year, but she accrued on during the year, and the carryover is as of December thirty-first. So she left at the beginning of December, so she had more than two hundred forty hours, and she had to be paid out all of them.
It went down carrying, it was accrued.
That was the vacation hours.
Correct.
Forty, forty hours a week.
Thirty-seven and a half hours, she would, she may, according to my calculation, thirty-two dollars and two cents an hour.
Then, if you accumulate forty hours a week, uh, forty, we're talking six, seven weeks on vacation. But that's in, that's seven weeks. Forty hours a week, okay? Uh, forty into two hundred ninety-four vacation hours, we're talking, uh-
That was not the cruel, that was not her cruel rate. At the end of the year, it does not get back to zero.
Right, you have a certain amount you can carry over.
She can carry over two hundred forty hours.
Accumulated over a long period of time she detected vacation.
Well, you-
Until it got to two forty, she wasn't subjected to losing it.
She never loses it because it rolled over to sick time.
All right, learn character.
Well, I, I tell you what, and that's something we need to think about, about setting rules and all this.
Of course, no one's-
So, so-
That is a standard, just so you know, that's a standard across the entire state for all counties.
When you exceed, so there's a rule that says you can't carry over more than two hundred forty, but you don't lose them because they roll over to sick time.
Correct, which counts to your retirement.
Retirement's not into your-
There's really no, no rule that says you will lose any vacation.
There are some counties that make you, you use it or lose it, but the majority of counties do what we do, they allow it to roll over.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not paying it out, otherwise.
Sick days you're not paying for.
Right, if it, here we've been, thirty-four hours, whole-
You pay it forward if they use it.
All right.
I mean, I don't have your-
It's already been spun out, so this is basically just an amendment to clean up the budget.
Right. Well, it, it's, uh, if, understand that part, um, maybe it's something for us to visit. Not trying to take anything away from anybody, but just-
As the way it goes, we'll see it.
I think if we want to be fair, certainly, uh, you know, we don't want to be doing something that, that is, is not basically right by county, the citizens of this county. And the citizens of this county is what, a bunch of- And the citizens of this county is what we want to.
And you also, and one of the, never mind, this is another discussion, we need to keep it on topic. So personnel, we are reviewing, uh, personnel ordinance in turn, like, and that is not something I mean, also we're looking at. We feel like it's fair to everyone, and that was not a recommendation that was to be brought before you at any point in time.
Well, I also, working in a, you know, in school system, some people have no time, have no vacation days, and no comp time. They spend every day, every year, and that's it, they walk away. And, I mean, it's just the nature of the beast.
What's your preference?
Yeah, what's your preference? Some people say, well, if I get hit by a Mack truck, I don't want the county, state, or county to have, and I have not had a little bit of that day, th- those days. And they, every year, they use everything, sick days, leave time, whatever. And then you have others, like me, who were judicial and you kept my days as much as possible. And, I mean, I use days, but I work my work days.
Well, another, another school of thought, too. Here, I've got two schools of thought combined, and one of them is, um, that person could accrue all of that time. They're committed for it, that's why they accrue it, because they showed up every day. You know, so certainly one of the board that, what we're doing is we're just seeing a lump sum, and that's getting our attention. And the old school thought is, um, and, and I've seen, heard, or read something about this in the last few months is, mandatory vacations in some businesses, have mandatory vacations, so people can force themselves to be replenished. You know, it makes a better employee. So there's another school of thought. And then one more thing is, the banks do this, they make you take a vacation. Because while you don't, they'll look for inconsistencies, things that happen while you're on there, so, just a.
My chair, I'll make a motion that we accept Amendment forty-seven.
Second.
Motion been made, second to accept Amendment forty-seven, all that, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I tell you what, it's.
I would like to add, just for the, for the sake of, of knowledge of, is that if an employee is thinking about leaving for whatever reason, if they leave after the thirty-first, they lose it, right?
No, they don't lose it, they go, so they're sickly.
But if they, if they're knowledgeable enough to know that they left by the third of December, they can get it. I want to make sure that's accurate.
And, yeah, will they, you?
No, I mean, not the wrong, I mean, yeah, yeah.
But it doesn't count that person who's taking it all along.
Right, because the taxes are going to wrap it too.
Um, would it, would I, can I have the board's permission to go ahead and do the solid waste management authority? Because I think maybe the res zoning discussion and the revision of county person, purchase policy. And, no, you know exactly what that will entail, but can we do the e-waste letter? And get that out of the way, and then take a break for maybe fifteen minutes? Because it's one third. Is that? Okay, we have, um, if you look at this, this is a letter from the solid waste management authority, Mr. Felton, and, uh, all about committee. Due to the large increase in the disposal of electronics and no funding from the state of North Carolina, this is kind of a financial burden on Gates County, uh, that would be filled in the blank. Because of the law as presented below, the electronics cannot be disposed into landfills of the county. It has to contract service of electronic specialty company to remove the products from the county. NC general statute one three zero A dash three oh nine, one thirty, through one thirty A dash three oh nine point one forty-one. Discard computer equipment television management. Establish an electronic recycling program in the state of North Carolina with shared responsibilities between computer manufacturers, television manufacturers, retailers, local state governments, and consumers. The goal of the program is to foster a statewide recycling infrastructure for these materials. In conjunction with this program, the law banning TVs, computers, monitors, printers, scanners, computer, uh, such as keyboards and mice from disposal in landfills. This letter is in support of solid waste section, section, reviewing and rewriting the law without permitting the disposal of electronics in landfills, provided the landfill meets the required support by solid waste section and has no environmental or public health impact. Let it be known that the county commissioners voted unanimously on the date to support above information with further action being taken by the North Carolina Solid Waste Section, Section to resolve this concern. It used to be that we, you know, there was a trailer at the convenience sites, and you could go take your electronics, and they had someone who would come by, I mean, the state had that, and they paid your county to dispose something. And that funding is gone, correct, Mr. Felton? And I, so what do you do with this stuff?
And that's what's still being done, but they have no one to, was basically now we're paying someone to haul it away.
Yeah, well, thanks, so.
This is going to be a stated bully, or is that a private contractor?
It's private contractor.
Should be a resolution.
This is what they have requested.
Uh, just for, for, for reading material. I know a mouse is a mouse, but I didn't know a mouse was a nice, in computer world.
Oh.
Was that in there? Yeah, mice.
Yeah, I did, that got through me when I saw that, I thought, I read what was written.
But I, I just.
Glazed it.
Yeah, makes sense.
And, um.
Well, I'm like the commissioner, Jordan, I'm surprised it didn't come in the form of a resolution, but, I mean, I know what they're trying to accomplish.
We can make it in the form of a resolution if you like, but they just asked for a letter.
And this would have our letterhead on it.
Who sent it to Joseph?
They, they want it tomorrow. It's a letter. Since we have a PCG meeting and, uh, um, solid waste management meeting, and they will determine who it's being sent to. They're sending it to the property authorities. I believe what was discussed at our last meeting was everyone's representatives and senators. Because they cover so many counties.
They want our letter.
Excuse me?
They want our letter, right, for that.
Yes.
Call it again.
So they want to remove the, have them all.
It would.
This, this comes from you.
Okay.
And being, you know.
Are there PCBs sometimes located in this?
Are there what?
PCBs, the, uh, the material called PCB, you know, it's also transformers and.
I have no idea.
That's very.
I think it just relates to anything that is electronic, it's got a cord on it.
I think at least it's just safe to make a concern.
Yeah, I mean, you got to have a head, it's got to have somewhere, I mean, to them it may concern.
Now, the new limited percentage, it, it costs us something like, I, four, five, six percent, I mean, four, about six times as much to dispose of this, of the elevated trash.
I don't remember, I think I wrote it down and.
Yeah, if we, if, if we're, if other counties have been asked to send this in, and they send it in letter form, like we're looking at, and we send ours as a resolution, we probably need to keep it all. If they requested it like this now, then I don't think we need to keep it like this.
But our letterhead, at least to whom it may concern, and then sincerely, or whatever. But what they really want us to do is to, um, put this stuff in our landfill. If it, but we have to make sure that we got it.
All of this changed last year, and they're trying to get reverted back to what it was.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we, um, we submit a letter to whom it may concern with Gates County letterhead and, uh, the chairman signature um, in response to, in support of North Carolina general statutes, one thirty A dash three oh nine point one three oh through one thirty A dash three oh nine point one forty-one.
One thing, when you say in support, I'm, I haven't read that general statute, I don't know if that in support of this.
That says discard computer equipment TV, television management.
That's what it's in, that's what the general statute is in regard to.
I mean, it's, I don't know if that, if being in support of, being in support of the.
Yeah, what is it?
The farabas actions taken by North Carolina solid waste.
What, what, we just have, uh, that, uh, we've wrapped, due to language that's been presented to us from the, the overall regional, uh, solid waste management.
Just put in Gates County and the date here.
And then to whom it may concern.
To whom it may concern, our letterhead, and just the chairman's signature.
Yeah, the letterhead would have Mr. State.
Okay. That's not my.
Okay, that's your motion.
Amazing.
That is, I get it, in a large discussion, hear none, okay. All those in favor say aye.
All right, one o'clock, I'll wait up to.
More than, yes. Okay, let's take a fifteen minute break, because tonight we have to, need to stretch our legs and all. So we'll re-convene, and fifteen minutes is fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, fifteen.
Okay, we will continue all of our new business, and we will now go into the rezoning discussion. Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan has sent a request, Mr. Jordan, I'll let you, um.
Right, I guess there's something that was brought, or, you know, brought to me by a citizen of the county, and the area that, I felt that the mixture of the homes there, uh, should allow some provisions for, uh, double Y and home, mobile homes. And, uh, we've done it in the past, and certainly, the way our zoning ordinance is, is, you know, we make no provisions for, uh, mobile homes, and the zoning ordinance should officially be banned, but it's a reality, and it's something that accommodates our citizens. This is the area that appears to be feasible for it. And so, as commissioners for the R fourteen, we are allowed to rezonate properties and people. And after holding a public hearing, uh, therefore, I would ask for that we would consider this area, we have a map there showing, um, the rezoning areas, maybe those are one properties, uh, that's outlined. Uh, these are properties that are west of the convenience site, prior to going into Oduka. Uh, it stops right there, but, um, I would certainly ask for to, uh, move forward in holding public hearing around rezoning those properties, so that the homeowners could put in a mobile home there. As they would like to in the area, that already has some in that area.
So I am familiar with the area, but I did not go back and count the number of other homes that are right, right there, maybe there are two?
I believe there's, there's two, and one double Y with a, with a ramp on it, maybe twenty thousand. And, uh.
A single Y, and that would.
There's a single Y across the way.
Right.
And that, that's just a place that.
Right, and that was a double Y, and then there's a double Y, one of these pieces of property actually has a double Y, and it's the one. If on your map, you see where it says fourteen hundred, that is the, there's a currently double Y.
Well, according to our, our ordinance, this has to be presented to the board, the planning board first, for their recommendation, for anything else can go through. Plus, there has to be a six hundred dollar fee for each parcel. And on the deal, that's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parcels. So we have to get forty two hundred dollars collected before it can even be.
That's if, if the commissioner board brings, does a request, we're requesting rezoning. And, uh, of this area, that's, that's the purpose of going officially. And in R fourteen, um, it says to adopt a zoning ordinance and zone property, the board commissioners shall follow the same procedure as specified in the ordinance, except that section fourteen oh two shall not apply. Instead, the board commissioners shall overcome the carrying, so.
But we're not, we're not adopting a zoning ordinance and zoning property, we are rezoning, or you're requesting a rezoning. And that is part of fourteen oh two. If you rezone, you go through the planning board first, for their recommendation, and that's what this is rezoning. But also, for a rezoning, there is a fee of six hundred dollars per parcel to be accompanied that request for rezoning. It can't, it can't be that a citizen comes and asks me to request a rezoning, so that they don't have to pay their fee, that, that's just.
I think that's, 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 that's the way you interpret it, but from the way I'm interpreting it here, that the commissioners can, uh, make rezonings, uh, if they, people feel that it's feasible, if they're willing to do so. Now, you know, regardless of whether citizens has come to us, or whatever, what calls us to initiate this, um, you know, that's, that's up to, to the commissioner or board.
I don't, I don't see that as an interpretation that says very clearly, to adopt a zoning ordinance and zone property, the board commissioners shall se, follow the same procedure as specified in this ordinance, except that section fourteen oh two shall not apply. Section fourteen oh two is speaking of rezoning, and that's what this request is for, rezoning, not the zoning.
I was, uh, I was contacted by a citizen about this. And, um, their comments, they actually sent me, uh, sent me a text, or sent me an email. And, um, they saw it as, uh, not being fair to the people who came before, that paid the six hundred dollars, was their, was their comment to me. And that was pretty much, that was pretty much the, in summary, that's what their, their concern was, that if, if we did, if we did this, that it was taken out of the hands of the planning board, and, uh, making a decision that should come for them, and that if, if we approve something like this, uh, this is, this is from, from the individual, that if we approve something like this, then there should be a line outside the door saying, I want my six hundred dollars back. This, 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 how many people would, would come and say, if I had known that, I would have come to a commissioner and, and took that approach. And I realize you're talking about an area, you're not talking about one individual lot. But I've shared with you the concern that, that came to me, and the person, um, was very familiar with, uh, the planning board's, uh, procedure. It wasn't a short email, that's why I summarized it for you.
I'm not having a problem with the, with the request, but I think if, if the request, when we made it, he should go through the proper procedure, and not try to jump over the planning board, and not try to excuse the fees, and all this kind of stuff. Now, of these selling parcels, I know one man that owns three of the parcels. I doubt that he's been contacted to see if he's ready to send his eighteen hundred dollars in.
Probably think about it, yes. I feel that I never agreed with the zoning ordinance. We hired a company to come in here and, and, and put in a zoning ordinance that zoning every property in Gates County are one. Gates County, you had mobile homes here. I, I couldn't even estimate what the percentage of it, it may be thirty percent of the homes in Gates County is, is, is mobile homes. But guess what? You zoned none of them. You zoned none of them, for mobile homes. And we've done this in the past, we've rezoned property over in your area, Billy, I can't think of the name of that road we did. But if we take an area, we're not taking individual properties, we're taking strips here. And I think it's, it's, it's something good for the county. If we see an area where people, it's, it's not rezoned according to where it is and we want to do it to accommodate a specific situation and, and plus make that area consistent, I don't see anything wrong with it. Now, you know, it may not be feasible for every area. If there were some stick-built homes there, that's going to devalue the property to an extent that it's not feasible, I can see not doing it. But that's not the case here. And, you know, you're going to have a public hearing, a public hearing is certainly any landowners in that area that's against it can come in and make their cases at a particular time. But I don't see this as.
Well, you said you don't agree with the zoning ordinance, and that's fine. Maybe none of five here might not agree with it, I don't know. I was going forward when it was approved. But whether we agree with it or not, it is the ordinance, it was approved, and it's there, and it's law. And if we're not going to go with it, we just will, for the whole thing, I tell everybody what we want to.
Well, I, I understand your position. You're saying that fourteen oh two does apply for the many. That's, that's the interpretation. I, I didn't see it that way at the time when I, when I proposed this. Parabola above it that I just read, it said that to adopt a zoning ordinance and zone property, board of commissioners shall follow the same procedure as specified for many. Now, we're, we're zoning property, we're, we're taking, we're taking this area of properties and rezoning it, that's what we're doing.
That's right, rezoning.
Well.
Can I say something? In a row. I don't, I mean, I think this is a very slippery slope, that if we opened the door to this type of thing, that all of us would be inundated with people coming, wanting to avoid the fee to ask for a piece of property to be rezoned. And, you know, I just don't want to have that, you know, say yea or nay of that. We have a procedure, if you want your property rezoned, you go to the planning board. Now, the planning board has sometimes taken a strip of plan and rezoned it, you know, on either side of it or down the, I think if you remember, the Dr. Odom's, that was just, that was just one, that a strip was not rezoned, but her place was. You know, it was, I know sometimes, I wasn't one up there on, about Andy Groentree's guy, one of those side roads that we used, or, but that was.
That was the one, that was the formative, yes.
That was the planning board though, and they went through the procedures and that the funds were collected. And I just think, you know, we've asked, I mean, people who've asked to be rezoned, we have a process. You pay your fee, you go to the planning board, you have a public hearing, and if you don't like what the planning board says, you can appeal to the board of commissioners.
Well, I, here's why, and this is, I have no idea of what the planning board can come up with, but if, if we ask the planning board to study this area, forget these little, these seven lots here, we ask them to study this area and come back with any recommendation that they wanted to, I wouldn't be surprised if they wouldn't approve that.
Well, I think that's just.
I mean, they may, they may approve that, but, but at the same time, if they were, if it went through procedure, we said the area, they might come all the way down here to the landfill site and do, and do the whole thing. You know what I'm saying?
I'm, I think it's immaterial whether they're proven or not.
And I don't think that's the law. Whether they are proven or not.
Well, you understand, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I'm getting to that point, but I'm just saying that.
But I just don't think it's the planning board's job to go back and go through it. I, at this time, I, you know, that's not a whole question. Certainly, I disagree on one point, a lot of things were zoned at a warrant. Okay, county.
Actually, it was, that's what G I S is working today. And based on other discussions that we've had with the planning board lately regarding different zonings, I'm pretty sure that just about everyone on the planning board is in agreement that there are areas in the county that zoning needs to be worked out, that if, we have property, as we discussed out on thirteen one fifty-eight, that there's always been a business there and it's zoned residential. So, they themselves have a concern, but they are in agreement that right now is not the time, they want to have a planner who's been here for a little bit of time that's well-versed and can help them understand all of everything and spot zoning and, and if we need to bring in a consultant and we get everything, you know, there is that option.
Well, the thing about it is, the way this is set up, it's almost a setup for our citizens to make money or to cost, to charge, charge our citizens money, funds. If you want, if you want to put a mobile home there, guess what? You come in, pay six hundred dollars, and, and we'll see what amount of people are rezoning.
No, sir, on residential, that's not even allowed for a special use program on that side of the road now.
Where did that say again?
Residential does not allow mobile homes of any type, single or double Y.
Right, but even agriculture is one.
Right.
If it's only one, if you want to put a mobile home there, guess what? You pay your six hundred dollars or five hundred, whatever it is, and then it'll go to the, the planning board and.
Like, it goes before the board of adjustments.
It's a special, it's a special. You know, it seems to be the intent of the zoning ordinance was to stop putting mobile homes in Gates County. Well, you're not stopping putting them there, but you, if you want to put them there, guess what? You're going to pay six hundred dollars to get them there. It's just not fair to have areas that's conducive, you got people who want to put a mobile home there and then say, well, okay, you paid your six, you paid your six hundred dollars. And I understand what you're saying, that goes and they've done it in the past, what are, what are they going to say? Hey, I paid mine, why can't everybody just pay theirs? Well, there will come a point in time when it, the rules, things need to be changed. And that's what I'm, I'm saying here, this is an area, yes, it was more than my intention. This is an area here, not just one area, but that it's feasible for that. You've got other type homes like that in the area. The area is next to a convenience site, it's, it's, and there would be a number of lots in there where there's someone else wanting to bring a mobile unit in there to do it.
Well, a lot of these are off-road, and there's, there's some potential qualifications for being off-road as well, about the size of the lot and.
Well, I know one person who wants a piece of that property next to it, does not want her property rezoned or RMH, she has said, said against it, and she said, you know, what they do with others, but she would not be in favor of it, planning board, commissioners, anyone rezoning her property because of that.
And the purpose of the plan.
I know, but you're talking about doing the area, you know, a larger area.
And the purpose of zoning is to have uniform and have growth, but you, you don't, if you have a, a lot of stick-built homes, you don't want a mobile home park right in the middle of it because it's going to devalue your property. And so, I, you know, and I think that, that premise is, because I can tell you, you can ride through communities, you can ride through counties, and you know who has a zoning, you know. And concerning that, but I just see, you have a, you have a protocol and people just need to follow it. And like I say, you have to pick like seven parcels, or all these seven owners contacted, or the owners contacted all these parcels.
The only way to ask is that you, you have to move forward, have a public hearing, and at that time, then you can find out whether you.
Well, I just think that's not the way to go by. I think we have the procedures.
It's like there's seven, if I understood you, Billy, that there's seven lots here. Commissioner Jordan, do you know how many different owners there are?
Uh.
There's four, I believe, I just haven't just looked, we double-checked, I believe it's four of them.
With one only.
Three, one man owns three of them.
Okay. And then somebody else owns two, I guess. And then one piss.
The proper, proper procedure would be for the blanching ad, if they want to go through this blanching ad, they pay that fee and go before the planning board and get ball rolling. That's, that's the way that our ordinance is set up to be.
Well, I think, I would, I would question that. The way the ordinance is written, I don't think it's clear, it's maybe the way we've interpreted in the past, but in section fourteen oh three, it says an amendment may be initiated by a board of commissioners, the planning board, the board of adjustments, or by petition of any owner or legal applicable interest in the land located in Gates County. Now, when the board of commissioners do it, we're going to pay six hundred dollars?
Yes, what it says.
What, what it says, what is it saying?
Well, it, it just said that six hundred dollars per parcel. But if, what someone else mentioned here is, if Earl Rice has come to me and said he wanted his highest location, I mean, wanted it rezoned, but he didn't want to pay the six hundred dollars what I presented.
That, he's, now, he didn't say he didn't want to pay the six hundred dollars.
Well, maybe, well, I said, he came to me and said he didn't want.
The problem of the thing is.
The, the problem is, we, we've got no ordinance, and it, I don't see where it's interpretation, it's very clear. And it's, it's said very clear, and I don't, I don't see the problem.
Well, generally, to me, if we, if we, for the growth of the county and proper growth of the county, if we saw as a group, and this is, this is often used the term slippery slope, as a group, if we were having a discussion about rezoning or growth in the county, and we sought to rezon an area, I think that we would approach the planning board and ask them to consider a certain area, or for them to select some areas that might be appropriate for rezoning, and then they submit something to us. And, and Commissioner Jordan, I do see it as a little bit different, not trying to gain forty-two hundred dollars, that's, that's not what any of my comments are about, but it's about that fairness issue. And the email that I got from the individual, I have to address it from that person's point of view, but I can disagree with the point of view, you know, I'm expressing that individual's point of view, but in this particular situation, out of fairness, I happen to agree with his point of view and his email, that how can you face John Dugan who paid the six hundred dollars when he comes to you and says, I paid my money? Why is this individual going the route where he or she doesn't have to pay? So, in a fairness issue and going against, not going against precedence or setting precedence, but going against the protocol. Now, interpretation wise, I understand what you're saying on interpretation, but clearly the method and the protocol is set in force in our, in our ordinances. And generally, anytime something comes up here, we look to the computer and to the county manager, what's the ordinance on that, and what's the general statute on that? We go back to the rule and then move and, and that, so, and so that, I mean, that's where I fall into that.
Well, what I've done is, section fourteen oh three says an amendment may be initiated by a board of commissioners. I've brought the board of board commissioners, as a commissioner, a request, if you all don't see it feasible, if you're not in agree with it, with it, so be it, we can move on. But I, I board the core here, I, I still feel that commissioners have the authority to initiate amendment and rezon these properties, you all don't, that's fine, that's fine.
Well, you certainly have a right to do it, you read what they, I don't know what you did.
Okay. Are you, are you proposing that that is, you're proposing this is a amendment?
Right, I would.
Okay. If that's a amendment, do I have to suck it?
I'd, I'd like to. Can you, will you officially, I mean, if you, if I choose to?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we rezoned the property identified in the NO from Commissioner Henry Jordan, to be rezoned as RMH one, in accordance with the zoning ordinance, art fourteen oh three allows the commissioners to initiate amendment and to, and move forward with having a public hearing on that rezoning.
Okay. My motion has been made, do I have a second? Here, no, second, it fails to advance. Okay, number sixteen, discussion of revision of county purchasing policy. We have nothing, I didn't have anything in my book like that.
Well, do I get something else?
Tim May, I look for the record that no one has come to me or to finance to discuss this, and we both see this as a day-to-day operation that should be addressed with us.
Well, we're going to, we're going to discuss it.
We are going to discuss it. I think we would have to decide that.
Well, we're going to be in jail.
Okay. It'll give us time to read it before we start this one. Can I have the copy for Ms. Hollis? So, is my understanding, you did not talk to Mrs. Hollis concerning this?
No, I, I have not, uh.
Okay, finance department, did you talk to the county manager?
Have not talked to county manager about it.
Okay, so you faced it on department heads.
And as I said, no department head has come to me with this. I have an idea, I'm going to be completely honest, where this is coming from, but no one has directly come to my office and asked if this was an option.
Am I the only commissioner?
No, I, I have had, in the past, not recently, several department heads talk to me about, and going back to Sheriff Webb, and I think we, we had discussions. And I know that I've not talked to the county manager about it, but the two hundred and fifty dollars that I talked to Sheriff Webb, and can't remove people all that in front of us enough, but I told him how we alleviated that once upon a time, it was that each department had a, a credit card issued at a department up to maybe fifteen hundred dollars so that they could make a purchase if they needed to, and then they did their follow-up with the purchase request. In other words, if they were traveling or if they were in a location and you made a purchase, or there was emerging situations such as a front door, if it were maintenance here, that needed a front door for the courthouse. so they could make a purchase if they needed to. And then they did their, um, follow-up with the purchase request. In other words, if they were traveling or if they were in a location and you made a purchase. Or those emergency situations such as a front door, if it were maintenance here, it needed a front door for the courthouse, that, that procedure, that they could use a credit card, that weren't the rent and survive over, and subsequently come back and forth, and, and not have to wait a week before they got a check.
But you said that has not been recently?
Well, it, it, the most recent one was probably, uh, right after Hurricane Matthew, so that was sort of, sort of, not most recent, that was when the war fought, it's all, just asked. And I said that it was difficulty in giving checks, not to the county manager, but, uh, when it was another, when we had other situations, they asked me if I knew the policy. And I thought I did, and so I read and sold two hundred and fifty dollars and, and realized at that point, that two hundred and fifty dollars is not a great deal of money for equipment, or for paint, or for a door, or glass, or whatever. And I don't know if they have come to the county manager.
No, if it's, if it's an emergency, and you keep saying the front door, because that's in the budget for next year. If it's something like that, they have, department heads have been told, you can call. And I have been known, you can ask Billy Green, you can ask Timmy, there are several that have called me and said, such and such group, I have to have this now, can I go get it? Yes, go get it, the purchase order after the fact. And they have, or they have texted me or emailed, you know, and that is, then they were told to go get whatever they need and do it after the fact.
Other than something like this, if you handed the purchase policy, that it would alleviate a lot of pressure on you, county manager, making those decisions that may seem to be inappropriate, you know, it's, it's already out there, uh, or questionable. And that's, that's what this revision, the vote of revision is about.
But you're requesting that we do special check runs.
Do special check runs?
That's the way, I am reading that, Ms. Hollis, is that, haven't you read that? That there are special check runs?
Well, if it's an emergency.
But if it's an emergency, typically, they're not needing a check. I can't think of every time that someone has come to me and asked me it was an emergency, they have either used the county credit card, or it has been in a local location, and they're able to charge it. And then they send us the bill.
Well, if it's something that, uh, they seize a credit card, a man who own a credit card, own a lot of much over ten thousand dollars.
We've never had anything like that. That's an emergency.
What is a credit card?
So, if you can give me a more credible, I mean, example.
All right, let's take, let's take a situation where, uh, the sheriff had, had purchased a vehicle. And can't use that vehicle to what, until?
I signed the paperwork for his vehicle, and he was sitting in my office. And he said he needed tags, he had just received delivery of that vehicle. And we got the tags, taken care of, that needed a check was written in it, so.
Now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, if, could I, the end of that, or he was sitting in your office when you wrote him the check?
No, when we signed the paperwork for the delay the truck was delivered.
Okay, and.
And the check was written, uh, either that afternoon for the tags, if I remember correctly. But the truck was delivered with temporary tag on it.
So, what is the point?
People could be, could have been in service with a temporary tag, which was, which was taken. Well, let's don't beat around the bush, that is what we're talking about. We're talking about, what I, that episode, uh, dream, uh.
If I give a situation on, on checks, is that what I was talking about is Sheriff Webb, Senator Earl, was the paperwork one day, and, uh, and of course, that was two or three county managers ago, and, uh, so, has nothing to do. But while I was there and carrying that paperwork in, he had signed it, it was something he needed that day. And, uh, I don't recall how much or anything else, I was, I was a runner. And I went into finance, and I said, we can't do this next week. And I said, well, he needs this right now. And it was not much of an argument, it was a little bit of discussion. And then the county manager walked by and said, what's up? You know, what do you need, right? And I said, well, I came to you to get a check, Sheriff Webb, he's got his, his stuff in order here, I assume it's in order, but it was signed, and he needed a check. And the person in finance said, we're not able to do this, be another week, and write checks on Friday. And he said, get a check, we got a write check, sheriff needs the money. She got a check, we got a check, gave it to him. It was over. However, I wondered why, at that time, I wondered why, you know, if there's a request and there's money there, why couldn't check be written?
Well, I think, from a little bit of my knowledge of high finance and work, and I'll, people in the finance department wear many hats. And you're sitting there reconciling statements, and we have a lot of different kinds. And somebody's coming every ten minutes, or every half hour, every, just a couple of times, to want you to stop and do, you gotta get out of that program, you gotta do, you know. Yeah, emergencies come up, but emergencies don't come up every day. They usually, when you start making, you know, they have a timeframe where they're doing reconciliation. And you've got your mind focused on reconciliation, all these checking accounts that we have and all this stuff, and stop that, and then have to go, yeah, if I'm not right, Ms. Hollis?
You are, yes.
And then you have to go out at those computer screens, go into a null program, and, um, yeah, we all have emergency. I'll have, the emergency still happens all the time.
I think for consistency, if you had something in the purchase policy to address that, uh, it's, it takes away the ambiguity of, you know, why can't I get what I need at this particular time, if it's an emergency? So, it doesn't mean what's defined in the, in the purchase policy, I mean, you know, it, it, it takes that way.
Okay, if the incident is about this car, what was the problem? They had temporary tag?
Uh, Sheriff. Sheriff, I'm right here, you can ask.
Okay.
I'm not talking about my car, the pickup truck. On April tenth.
Wait till you get to thirty there.
I, I, I'm sure you can hear me. On April tenth, my name is Randy Afterglow, Sheriff Davis County. On April the tenth, there was an email sent out from Marie Mindy saying that she would not be in town on Thursday and Friday, which was the Friday before Good Friday.
But Good Friday, everybody called.
Ma'am.
Cut check before you cut.
She wouldn't be here on Thursday or Friday. She, her last day was Wednesday. She said typically, let me read you the email, because I made sure I locked it in. The email stated that checks would be cut by three P M.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, April the twelfth. On Wednesday, April the twelfth, my car was delivered, it was already been approved for. The paperwork was already sent in to get the tags for that vehicle. I'm not talking about the truck, Ford F-150, I'm talking about the two thousand and sixteen dollars truck, even though I had problems with the truck, uh, the truck as well. At eight o'clock that morning, or nine o'clock that morning, when the car got here, or ten o'clock, I asked Marie for the check. She said it wasn't ready. Those men bought a car down here with dealer tags on it, because I told them that I should have the check for the tag. On the twelfth. When they got here, the check was still not ready. At ten minutes to twelve, I asked Marie again, just to be asked, is the check ready? I'm going to target with lunch with these guys. At three o'clock P M, at eight minutes to three, on April the twelfth, I asked Marie again, is the check ready? I had to be in a meeting at four o'clock, she looked at me and laughed, and she said, no, Randy, your check ain't ready, and it won't probably be ready before we leave. But according to her email, the check would be ready by three P M. Then there was an email that went out from Mary Manry telling me that typically, the policy on that, the, the practice has been that the checks be cut on Friday, typically, on Friday, by four P M. I am always told policy and procedure. You want, I'll, let me read it again. Because I, it may be three o'clock, but usually cuts a check, cuts, checks are cut on Friday, with Good Friday being that week. So, out of curiosity, I just asked, I'm not trying to start anything, but it's against the law for the sheriff to drive down the road with no tags on the car. Jesse Brothers, and he's John Q. Simpson, those guys bought in dealer tag from Clinton North Carolina, when they bought that Dodge Charger. I'm not asking them to go out and wait and do anything for me, but it seems that if there is a check issue, that you say you can cut the checks by three o'clock, and at three o'clock, I don't receive the check, I had already planned a meeting at four. So, to answer the question, Madam Chair, I can speak, because it was, yes, this is probably all directed at me. I'm not trying to start a war, but it just seems that a little bit unfair that I have to keep waiting. I don't see in a policy or procedure, if five county commissioners can correct me, anywhere in the county policy where it's checked, says checks are only going to be cut on Friday. It's a common practice. So, are we going to do common practices, or are we going to do policy and procedure? Which one are we going to follow? Now, I hear somebody say procedures, I hear somebody say policies, which one is it? It's common practice according to that email. Okay?
Do I, Ms. Hollis?
I just wanted to comment that the first couple of weeks that, that I took over my role as finance officer, I was confused as far as the timing, because I felt that I was holding things up. So, I started a spreadsheet to track when they hit my desk, when they go to the county manager, and when the check is issued. And, um, I found that it wasn't really, I mean, maybe it was the first couple of weeks, but after that, the process and procedure as far as internal in the finance department was working appropriately. Where I think we're running into issues, and it's not a, a just change the amount that's going to fix this, it really needs to be, first of all, we're going to new software. What will be the capability of that new software to be able to do a check run if we needed to today? And to cover segregation of duties, and to have everything in place for an audit. And that's when you start to, to fall into accounting issues, is when you, I need a check right now, I, I have the circumstances, I have emerged, I need a credit card. And that's when you have to have built in, and, and I agree with you, it, there, there's some cases where I need to have this today. But a majority of the times, the people that, when they come to me, they say, my check's not ready yet. And I'm not saying, just for you, really, I'm just saying that most of the controversy that I get is, I needed this today. But you just gave me the paperwork yesterday. And, well, I, I did what I was supposed to, and, and now I'm waiting for a second signature, that's not my issue. I did what I needed to do. You did what you need to do, now we need to do what we need to do, and this process is in place. It's not a matter of when you give me that paper, you know, and you're good at communicating, when will I get this check? Unfortunately, the first time, I was a newbie, the second time around, I think the issue with that, and I'm not, I, I don't hold me to this, but I think Marie had left, I thought she had left early on that Thursday because she was ill. On the, the day before, because I was out that day. And I had followed up and said, how did it go? Call me, you know, send me an email, and I thought I got an email saying I had left early, and she sent me some things that she needed me to look at that day.
You're referring to the truck, ma'am?
I, the, the last vehicle that he just.
The two thousand and sixteen dollar truck, was delivered on April twelfth.
And yes, I think that there is an issue that, you know, we need to sit down and take a look at, and off there is maybe.
This was directed to us, you mean, Ms. Hollis?
Oh, and I understand that, from a department perspective. But I don't think it's, uh, just increase the amount and say, well, print a check whenever we need to, is the answer. Because everybody's going to have an emergency, everybody's going to want checks done. Everybody's going to want to say, this is the policy, and, and, you know, you can do a check. Why isn't, this is an emergency? To me, I think we need to just, yes, we do need to address it, but I don't think this is the answer. I think it should be tabled, we should have an opportunity to look at it. We should also have an opportunity to research the new software, what can it do for us? The, the possibilities of that, I mean, I was impressed, as far as purchase orders, being able to get a pre-rep, to put it out there and get approvals, and have an automated process put in place. And then we'd be talking, it's a systematic error. But at least we'd be able to build some of this into an automated sign-off and approval process. And that's not only from a finance perspective, it's from A roll and other areas too.
Question? Do we have, if all of those, nothing about procedures, I just want to know about what we, how they're building it? If somebody comes in and requests a check, and it's a legitimate request, is that check going to be written by hand, or is it going to be typed, or is a computer going to spin that?
Put it through the process, it's in the computer.
Right, so you put information in the computer, it prints a check out, and then it gets two signatures?
It gets, it already has her signature on it.
And her signature.
Okay, so when it prints, it's got your signature on it, that way on it, and then?
And hers, all that way on.
Okay, so, the computer, you put it in the computer, it prints, it quick prints, it prints a check, you hand it to that individual, and, and then we, okay, all right. I was called about the issue and, um, and the, the email that followed, and I, I have to say, I thought the email that followed was a little harsh. Um, it was to the point.
And that was the point, I'm going to be honest. There have been, there have been other.
I read that in that.
There have been other departments, they have, you know, made similar requests.
Sometimes when, um, let me, I will go back a little bit. So, I was contacted about this, and, um, and I, I said, I want to see that email. So, Sheriff's email, at my request. And, uh, so, I thought about this thing, I said, I want everybody to get along. I want things to run smooth. And so, here's where I came up with it. I didn't come up with it like, like this here. It's just, but I came up with the phrase procurement exception. If there was a document that we created within our county system that said, Randy, you should have, because I, if you did, if this document already existed, and you went to Natalie, and she says, I don't, I don't believe that's an emergency, then you would say, I'd like to, I'd like to apply this as a procurement exception. I hadn't discussed this with Randy here for the first time. As a document, it says procurement exception at the top, you attach your invoice to it. Natalie signs it, saying, checks are blocked, says that she sees this as an exception. And you're signing it, saying you're submitting the exception, okay? You're going to get the check, okay? But Natalie is going to bring to, to accounting, she's going to make us aware when we need. Or maybe personnel department, I realize we're talking to the sheriff, and you, all we do is provide money. But when we get, we would set a rule that says, in a given period of time, one individual submits what we deem to be too many of these, we sit down and have a. Say, come to Jesus, or a meeting that says, was this, was this one really this? Was this really this? And you, we act like grownups, and we just, we just move on. And, and here's what I believe, I believe that we won't see many of these procurement exception forms. I believe before an individual goes there and says, yeah, I want to sign, say that this is an exception, they'll revisit their situation, Randy, your situation, you may have failed it again, that's what a form is for? So, I'm going forward with it, and you got your hand ready, so.
I need to make a clear understanding of your own emergency. I've never seen an emergency.
Okay, and.
I, I heard you, a couple of you say emergency. I filled the paperwork out, and it was already approved. I was only waiting for the check. These guys were waiting, so they could leave.
And if it wasn't a temporary tag, because they would have.
Yeah, they bought a dealer tag up here, but the problem is, it never was an emergency, this was days of downtime. This wasn't an emergency situation, I ignored it last minute. I followed every possible procedure slash policy that was supposed to be followed. The problem is, my day was getting late, I had a meeting at four o'clock, and it was eight minutes to three. And I was asked for the second time, not the third or the fourth. I called that morning to see if it was ready. The check was ready, it was on my desk, the purchase review. The tag was not, and the only thing I was asking for from the tag, the paperwork got turned in. And I was only waiting for the check for the tag. I understand that these ladies are busy, I do, because I know I'm busy. I almost not got in here two weeks, I answered phone calls, but I want to let you know that it was not an emergency, the paperwork was in. Now, if there's a policy or procedure, I understand it. But this says it was, been like this since I've been here, and it will not change. Change is due, but to say it will not change, I, I'm not asking anybody to change their lives, I'm trying to run an office.
Let me clarify this for you, what you're saying is, you shouldn't have had to have called.
No, 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 I just said, no, 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 no. Miss Hollis, no disrespect. Ms. Hall, don't disrespect me. I asked for a check and a tag. I didn't say I shouldn't have called, I shouldn't say I shouldn't have to call. Out of respect, instead of coming over there demanding the check, I asked. That's all I did. And there's nothing wrong with what I've done, I don't believe there is.
No, there isn't.
Because the paperwork was in. There was nothing in emergency.
Let me clarify my position though, what I'm saying is, you shouldn't have had to have called. If we had something in place, and we had a policy and procedure, you put your request in, the checks are cut by Friday at three o'clock or.
Julie, Ms. Hall, no disrespect, when, when you first got here, we were still giving other people.
Let me just say this. I think, and the purpose of me bringing this to the board was to have a discussion. I, I did not talk about it, the county manager, Friday, or by his office.
Or even the commissioner.
Well, I, Ms. Hall, if I may, Mr. Dr. Jordan, if I may, please.
Well, there's only business.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate that we have a county manager that runs our day-to-day operation, that's why we have one. I think it's appropriate that this has been brought up, that they have an opportunity now to see what concerns are, to look this over, and see what needs to be put in place in, in the policy and give, and, uh, in, in order to try to circumvent these kind of situations in the future, and bring it back to us. You know, this was not intended to be cutting stones, hey, this is what goes in there today, but it was a promoted discussion, and bring it out the over.
Yes, Ms. Hall.
So I think we should let it.
Madam Chair, you just said that we, and not to the county manager, I called you and left you a detailed message on your cell phone and your household. I blocked in your cell phone number and your home number to conversate with you, you never returned my calls. So I did call, every one of you five county commissioners sent that thing, to talk to you about your situation, I talked to four and five, you never called me back.
Well, I will just say, I've been having proceedings, Julie.
Yes, ma'am.
And.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't wanna talk to you about this.
I referred to you for the last month.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, first of all, I said I was very gloopy, so I didn't return any calls.
Okay, good idea, okay.
So I might have been, I might have been too big, you, I don't like, I don't like.
I'm not trying to start trouble.
No, Marie is.
But this is about business.
Yeah.
This is not about a personal check for a hamburger that was reimbursed for a prisoner going to Raleigh, and we had to buy a hamburger. This was about checks for a vehicle that you were being driven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I think what we, all, everybody just needs to sit down and look at it, and I think Commissioner Jordan is correct, it's beginning of discussion. Let them come over and see what can be the response to that. And let's just wait for the appeal from you. If that would be a break.
We need a revision, but I think the manager has to revise that two thousand twelve. We have the authority to revise the first policy.
With everybody's recommendation and, um, and good ideas?
Yeah, good ideas. And everybody needs to be, uh, set to say, and Marie is she, is she is the one cutting the checks and all, um, you know, yeah. Marie is generally very easygoing, so I hope you know. Okay, I believe that ends our new business. Since his comments, Mr. Reintrie, I believe, you have waited a long time, and you're gonna sleep on us or not?
World record. You were trying to beat the quills, weren't you?
I tell you what, I, I. It's not midnight. It's not midnight, right?
They started at six thirty, y'all started at ten. Always thirty.
That's five and a half hours, but we are approaching five.
And you not playing session after this?
Uh-huh.
Okay, well, maybe y'all are already waiting today.
Okay.
I, uh, well, anyway, let me get on to it, have we got the camera on me?
I've heard so.
I don't want it on.
We got the wide angle lens out there.
Oh. Anyway, Earl Reintrie, two, two, six, Molly Road, the carriage we have on the recs in. Uh, you know, I, I love this stuff, it's rhetorical, but I just as a citizen, and y'all knew me, all of you knew me. Uh, real quick, I think that this six, six hundred dollars and what Billy was saying, you know, when J.S. Pierce, another of y'all on the board, when J.S. was chap, uh, chairman, y'all were all on the board. Anyway, J.S. put me on his own board to, to start this stuff. And, and, and reason he did it, he said, a public comment, you know, he said, I'm gonna put Earl on here, and whatever comes out, he won't be able to disagree with. Well, one of the things that J.S. and the board went along with him was to make this revenue neutral. About, you know, that it wasn't gonna cost the county any money, and I hope y'all understand that, being this is a whole different ballgame, and that's why the six hundred dollars. Is that people that we got to go through the advertising, and under the planning board, and Linda's been in this, we do the figures. And it would be completely inappropriate, and y'all ended up not getting a motion on that, but not to charge them six hundred dollars, because somebody's got to pay for all of this stuff, and it would be me paying for it, and that's what I don't want. And I think Jack sort of alluded to that, because of other people. Just wanted to throw that in, that is the things that I started with. What I kept thinking I wanna say about it, I lost all my notes, so I don't wanna have to say anything. First of all, you read the resolution about old people. Now, I want you, Jack, to get a copy of that and give it to all of them. And when I stand up here to talk, think about that. Cause I am what you made that resolution, right? You're supposed to listen to me and respect me for my age. But I was impressed today very much, I'm glad I came. I was supposed to have been fishing, but I pushed my head on yesterday, but, uh, Linda, Hoffman, Chairman of the Commissioners, I was very impressed today that you asserted yourself on this water department situation. Cause this is something that has been going on. Uh, Mr. Jordan, Commissioner Jordan and I have been on to some of this thing. I have created a couple of very, very harsh enemies in county government, because I spoke on various issues. A couple of the people involved make sure they don't speak to me, that's their problem, I don't have a problem with that. But I think every question Linda asked, and everyone, anybody else asked, was on target. And we, uh, it's been going on for Ellen and Ellen, and, uh, I was really glad, and, Mr. Jordan, I gave him the Golden Glove Award today, because he made the comment that if the citizens out here are expected to pay their water bill and not have it turned off, or have to pay these fees, then they should be expected to not have leaks in their yard. And he gets the Golden Glove on that one today. Uh, but I, I wonder the information, and I have tried to find this for a long time, twenty-three percent, that's what I wrote down, Linda, lost water. Now, that's something Nick and Timmy pointed out that we buy hiders and drain, and you brought it up, and obviously you've done some homework, and got it from him, but that is a ridiculous figure. But it is a figure that some of the same people that your neighbors and all, called me, called you, so we can get both ways, probably called Billy Phil and Jack too. But that was one of the things that people didn't wanna know. If there's, if I was running the corporation, and this was my corporation, and Jack was running it for me, I would come in and I'd say, Jack, give me this figure, how many gallons are we pumping, and how many gallons are we selling? And Jack says, well, we're selling this, and we're pumping that, and I would say, Jack, do you want to keep your job, if you're doing fine, that way that twenty-three percent's going, and let's cut that to ten percent? I think it is the number that Linda had picked up. But I, I'm just saying this rhetorical, because I don't think any of the citizens, I just wanted to put these things on the record, uh, because agreeing with you. One other thing that I noticed today, I, I don't think this is one of the best admission meetings I've ever seen. As far as y'all discussing things, and agreeing and disagreeing, I've seen y'all disagree before and agree too. But, uh, what I'm saying, the interaction and the time that's been involved. But it did bring up something, and it has nothing to do with y'all, but while I got you here, I did bring it up to Natalie on the Board of Adjustments, and I was bringing up procedure. And so I noticed today, and of course, I had been to a couple of commission meetings before, I think, but I noticed today that y'all did a lot of discussions on issues. A long time before, there was never a motion or a second, or a motion. And, but I ran into this with the Board of Adjustments, and which two of y'all were there, in which the, the case was presented, a motion was made and seconded, and I had things to do different than that, and, and I asked Natalie if there was any procedure. Anyway, it, I want you to think about that, what I heard.
But if I made it, he knows they also discussed after they made elections.
Yeah, I mean, I never brought the rules board, but yeah, but I'm gonna sit in here sometime and discuss some of these stuff for fifteen minutes, and I'm wishing it had made a meeting of ours. You understand, am I right, Linda? I mean, this is the way it should be done.
We do not have any ru, I mean, all rules we have are, we don't have any specific rules. Says some boards do, by assignment, the stuff and all, but we do not. And that's why we can be a little bit more flexible, cause I looked in and I did set up rules, but then I lost that class on hands and lungs.
I agree with you, and I think the way you do it is wonderful, and I'm not trying to cause any trouble, I'm just trying to warn you that sometimes it's hard to get Natalie maybe on my side, but I need her on my side. Cause if I can't convince her, how am I gonna convince anybody else? But I go back, when I was on the Board of State Board of Transportation, I was on the Board of Animal Culture, and these were big state boards. And of course, in State Board of Transportation, we met on Thursdays, and everything was decided on Thursday, but not voted on. And that's what we, that's when you, I mean, the doors are open, just like here, but everything, it was a discussion day. That's when you argue, you fudge, you cry, you pray, and then Friday, it was pretty procedural, that's your motion second. But on the Board of Animal Culture was a one-day meeting. And so when we went in, you, just like you, we had our packet, and we studied it, and we knew which way we were going. And so, but we always, the citizens or the department came in, you know, we discussed it just like y'all did. And then when they would ask somebody to meet, or somebody would say, ask for the question. And there's a motion, there's a second, in the front of the discussion, but the discussion has already been done. You know, you either raise your hand or you didn't. But Natalie, I just brought that up, and to think that we can try to not do. Because what we had to do in that Board of Adjustments meeting, y'all remember, we had to rescind the motion that was made. And I definitely had a opportunity to try to get this lady to do what was right, which in the end, I think everything worked out. But I did, I just brought that up, I'm not gonna take any more of your valuable time. And, uh, other than the fact that Jack, respect me for my age, please.
If you, if you look at film, I looked up at you a couple sentences.
Thank you so much. Okay. Yeah, since his comments. Okay, Commissioner's comments. How, uh, starting down there with Commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, as Mr. Reintrie just said, and I think we have said, and noted, I've said to my colleagues here, that, uh, we do sit to agree and to disagree. And, uh, and we sit in unison with that, and it's all for the county's good, it's all for the citizens' good, we do weigh it out. And only long-term, we're looking at our citizenship, and what's good for the county, not what we specifically feel ourselves. Uh, concerns being addressed, uh, uh, I am pleased to be a part of those concerns, and I'm pleased that Madam Chairman brings them up, cause we do hear from the citizenship, we do ride around, take a look at that, and, uh, and, and talk among ourselves about that. So with all that, we certainly wanna continue to use all our resources wisely, and, uh, thank you for your participation today.
Our audience is a bit kinda small by now, but just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is the National Day of Prayer. It's been seven sides years ago, it'll be the fourth Thursday, the first Thursday in May of every year, which happened to be the fourth this year, or day. But there will be a service at the high school tomorrow morning at seven forty-five, and one here in this room at twelve o'clock tomorrow. And just encourage people to come, it's probably one of the times when our nation, not only our nation, but our local government and our people, our labels, we all need prayer, and we all need it from each other. Just encourage people to attend tomorrow, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Feldman, and I too, thank everyone that was here, participated today, and just know that we're trying to do what feels best for the county, what citizens of the county, and, uh, thank the citizens for what you've been a privilege to serve.
Well, thank everyone for coming, I'd like to thank my colleagues for, um, a good meeting, good dialogue. And, um, you know, when you run for office and are fortunate enough to take a seat, uh, we should remember that, we're here to voice the opinions that are brought to us, um, to voice them vigorously, uh, on their behalf. Um, and then state your own opinion as a, as a commissioner, what you think needs to go forward. And at the end of the day, we're still colleagues, we're still friends, and we're still, uh, supporting the citizens of the county. Um, Ms. Hawks, I have made this comment before, I'll make it before you, for the first time for you to hear, I love the people who look after the county's money. And hold them, uh, with a great deal of responsibility, and I believe that even Natalie and the finance team are doing that. And I believe when you're doing that, you're looking after the citizens as well. Good to see everybody, have a great day.
I do like to thank everyone for coming, and it's, um, we certainly had some nice discussions today, and um, that's, some discussions, generally differences of opinions, you can reach better decisions, is my, in my estimation. I do have a letter here from Jack, our friend, canine friend. Uh, Jack continues to do well, and is looking forward to assisting the shelter in fundraising for the new additions. We're working on a project to have this feature appear in various places throughout our counties, and attached are the new photos we plan to use, well, I don't have the new photos. But Jack is a force, every time he gets mentioned in the Commissioners' meeting, his donor, his owner gives a donation to the animal shelter. So, uh, we're proud to have Jack, to recognize Jack, and hopefully, hopefully he'll continue to, his owner will continue to contribute to the animal shelter. Um, thank y'all for coming, there are a lot of things coming up, Mother's Day's coming up, um, soon. We have National Day of Prayer, a lot of things, Memorial Day at the end of the month. So we have a lot of things to celebrate and to remember, by people who made sacrifices for our lives, so we can be here today. So we're looking forward to seeing you, our next meeting is in, on May the fifteenth at seven o'clock. So we look forward to seeing you later, thank you for coming. At this time, we will go into closed session pursuant to, I'll ask to go into closed session pursuant to from line of General Statute one four three dash three one eight, eleven A, on legal economic development and personnel matters, do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, come out of closed session.
So move. Second.
The motion's been made and prompted second, all those in favor say aye. Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, I have a motion to make, um, based on our discussion in closed session. Uh, I move that we direct our county manager, uh, to contact the person, uh, that was interested in our discussion, uh, to address them with the, uh, the offer that we voted on in closed session.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and prompted second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. My pledge in Paris, five zero. I'll entertain a motion to, to recess until May fifteenth at seven P.M.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and prompted second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.